Any comments for the act? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. So at this point, I'd like to have that motion presented as a bylaw, bylaw number 2007-147. Mr. Clerk?
Bylaw 2007-147 read a first time.
It will be moved a second time by Counselor Peter Anshel, second by Counselor Thompson. Again, all those in favor? Motion is carried.
Bylaw 2007-147 read a second or third time and passed.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All in favor? At this point, I'd like to ask for the adoption of the minutes of the council meeting of July 9th. Moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Carrion. Any discussion or yes, Counselor Wayne?
Yes, two corrections on pages four and five. Page four, on the status report on downtown revitalization, I did not vote on the adoption of that report. I declared a conflict, and I didn't vote on it because of its specific recommendations regarding Eastern Gateway, which I have a conflict on. And on page five, the status of the facility opening as a military museum, I added in a time limit to the recommendation when I moved it, and I can't remember what it was, but it should be on record. So that was with the addition of a time limit on the feasible business plan coming back.
Thank you very much. Any other changes? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the disclosure of any beginning interest by members of council. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I have a conflict of interest, PD 2007-59, the municipal heritage committee. I work as a consultant and do work for a company that is involved in that application, and also 2007-16, compliant audit. I'll declare a conflict at this point, but I may change my mind later.
Thank you, so noted. Counselor Carrion?
Thank you, your worship. PD 2007-59, same as Counselor Thompson's, municipal heritage committee report, read and marriag, that my next door neighbors, your worship, and whatever happens on that property could affect my property.
Okay, so noted. Any others? Having seen none, we'll move on to the next item. This evening, members of council, we have a deputation from Regional Counselor Bruce Timms, who's going to present us a matter before council on the national heritage designation for the Welland Canals. Welcome, Counselor Timms, and along with you, I see we have Counselor Barb Greenwood as well. You're welcome.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to thank you and the council for the opportunity to present the National Heritage Corridor concept for the Welland Canals. The scope of this corridor project runs from Port Weller in St. Catharines to Fort Colburn. It runs down into Waynefleet along the Theater Canal, over to Strong Ness and Port Maitland. And most importantly, it includes the connection of the Welland Canal to the Welland River in Port Robinson and down to Chippewa Creek, down to Chippewa. Your worship, I have proposed a motion of support with me, and I would want to ask your staff to share it with council, and ask the council perhaps to consider that motion at your next council meeting. We have the support of our MP, Rick Dykstra, and your MP in Niagara, Bob Nicholson. They have been supportive in arranging, last year arranged a meeting with the National Historic Sites and Monuments Board, when many of us were up at the EMO conference in Ottawa, and we will be doing that again this year.
Perhaps you can circulate that resolution to us before you leave, we might have an approval for you. We'll need to pass it on to the clerk, please, Counselor.
Yes, very helpful. Thank you. They've been working with us, and I must say, the member John Maloney has been supportive of the canal projects over the years, and especially the Great Niagara Circle Route. So I think for this concept, we'll have a lot of support in Ottawa if, when we get it to the stage where we can make that presentation to the Historic Monuments Board. So I'll run through this presentation fairly quickly, Mr. Mayor, because I understand council does have some background material in their package. The report that went through the region most recently was basically on the process of heritage designation, and the regional council has referred this matter to our strategic planning and strategy session. So I hope it will show up as an action plan that will hit all the strategic points in the region's plan. So you can see on the screen, we're dealing with the National Marine Heritage of the Four Canals, and we want to present it as a National Heritage Corridor. As you can see from, and this really stems from 2004, when Niagara hosted the World Canals Conference at Brock University, and one of the editorials at that time made the point that the old canals have been ignored far too long, and that the canal's history more than warrants their designation as National Heritage Area. But the thing we want to emphasize is that redevelopment can be a catalyst for restoration, and canal restoration can be a catalyst for redevelopment. This is not a new phenomenon, in fact, it's a worldwide phenomenon that we have encountered as we took the, we went to a number of the World Canals Conferences to promote the Niagara World Canal Conference. And one example that struck me was in Scotland, where the Fourth and Clyde Canal was taken on to try and reconnect it with the Union Canal. As you can see, it's a built-up urban area, and just as many of the canals, the old canals through Niagara have been built over, buried, redirected. Same case applied in Scotland, but they took on the role, took on the very ambitious project of reopening a number of those canals. You can see this example here, we can see an old canal about the size of our Second Canal, runs up to where the subdivision is redeveloped, and then disappears until somewhere up here. But they didn't give up and say, that's not doable, that's not stable, and they started reconstructing and allowing, finding ways to get the canal through and open again, for recreational boating in this case. And one of their more creative approaches was this rather spectacular Falkirk Wheel. That was the way they addressed the problem of, they had four old flight locks, that, five, a series of five, then the choice was, do we try and restore them, or do we do something spectacular for the millennium? And this was their project. And if you can figure it out a little bit, the upper canal flows into, through this aqueduct, flows into this chamber, you can see a canal barge in there. And then there's another lower chamber down here with another canal barge. These are more like recreational vehicles, if you've ever seen these canals. But with the energy of a four-slice toaster, this whole thing rotates, bringing this chamber down and raising that chamber up. Then they open up the lock gates, and away they sail. So it's an example that I wanted to use to ask that we not consider anything, or not rule out anything, and that we consider everything, and let's think large at this stage. And you don't really have to go to Europe to think big or to see what's practical or possible. In Quebec, at Montreal, the Lachine Canal is this canal here. It was abandoned in the 50s when the new canal, the Seaway Authority opened up to match the Welland in the 50s. So it ended up being largely buried and covered over, just like our Third Canal through the middle of the city of St. Catharines. But it, similar to some of the old canals, the industrial lands that had, industry that had built up along the Lachine, were gradually became abandoned, empty, and a liability to the municipalities. So what became, I guess, the catalyst for it was a little bit of environmental issue, what might be in the bottom of it, and what do we do with the old buildings? And it was the Quebec government, more of the city of Montreal and the city of Lachine, that convinced the federal government that this could be reexcavated, restored, and put back into use, and in fact, they did that. And so now this is open as a recreational canal. The lands alongside are redeveloping, I think the best example is the old Red Pass Sugar Warehouse is now a condominium. So we don't have to go to Europe to find out examples of what can be done, and I think we have to accept that anything is possible. So the mission, in the long run, for this project is firstly, restore, renew, and reinvent the old canals. I'm sure you're all aware of the history, there's four of them, and you could say four and a half, considering the bypass in Welland that was done in 1972. And secondly, to bring new life, relevance, and prosperity to the communities surrounding the old Welland Canals. And we can think of several in St. Catharines to Fort Colburn corridor. General Hospital is one of the best examples, where it sits right on the edge of the Second Canal, and the old canal and park down below is not very well looked after, simply because the city can't afford to do it well and do it properly. So again, the vision is redevelopment as a catalyst for restoration, and restoration as a catalyst for redevelopment. And finally, that the old canals are more than historical artifacts. So we have a regional mandate that came from the World Canals Conference, and the concept has two parts to it, the one that's getting most, and the most obvious one, is designation of the historic canals as a National Historic, National Heritage Corridor. But secondly, and most importantly to all municipalities in Niagara as a whole, is creating a plan for the redevelopment of the lands around that corridor. So it becomes a land use planning issue as well as restoring the old canal, and that's part of the payback for the restoration. There's a number of elements to a plan, including restoration of the old canals, including a plan for redevelopment of adjacent lands, and from a cultural point of view, recognizing the value of the canals to the development of Canada and the whole Midwest of North America, and to recognize the various immigrant groups that came to build the various versions of the canals. And finally, to establish a culture of heritage conservation around the canals versus the current culture of make safe and keep functional, and in the hands of the public works and the department, their priority is not restoration of historic structures. We have a number of images of some various sites around Niagara that you might find interest. That's the Burgon Bridge down behind, and below there is where the 406 would run over around behind those buildings. This plan also meets a couple of current needs, and one of them is to clean up the water in the Second Canal, as it draws water off of the Welland Canal in Thoreau. Abertibi Consolidate contributes, and the Interlake Paper contributes. But it runs down Dix Creek, the Second Canal, meets Twelve Mile Creek in St. Catharines, and then out into Port Toulouse, and out into the lake. So there's a water quality, environmental side to it, and also it fulfills the requirement of the new Ontario Heritage Act, which requires each municipality to keep a register of, registry of properties of cultural value and/or interest. So there's something that the city has to be doing in any case, and I think we can work them all together. We did last summer present to the board, National Historic Sites and Monuments Board, and their advice to this was that, while they've heard bits and pieces of this before, that they'd be more supportive to a more comprehensive proposal that is supported by all the canal communities. So we'll move along as quickly as I can, your worship. So you can see, here's a number of ideas of how this could be done. And of course, we'd like to go down to the Lachine National Historic Site model, where Parks Canada takes over the whole thing, the federal government does the whole thing from end to end and carries all the operating costs. That'd be nice, but the more urgent and more simple and possible step at this point is to get all the canal sites registered on this Canadian Registry of Historic Places. And your city, your planning department would probably know all about that, something that's underway. So we propose that we start this process with a symposium that would include the Niagara Region, Brock University, all the canal corridor municipalities, the historical sites and foundations, and general public, so that we could draw all these various stories, pictures, histories, together in one place, catalog it and sort it, so that it can be prepared and presented in a very organized position to the Monuments Board and to this registry. So what we suggested last year, I think it's still the way to start, is to ask the federal government to establish a commission, a committee, an office, to really facilitate the planning process, because we know this will take a large number of public meetings, will be a fair bit of local planning issues to sort out, and we're suggesting that the federal government might be able to support that process with an office that would pull together the Seaway, the province, the museums, then all municipalities. So, and I'll leave the CD with you, Mr. Mayor, so that all of this can be reviewed by your counselors. We have a number of local benefits, and St. Catharines, I mentioned, the General Hospital. One of the things that is unique about the Welland Canals that makes us distinctive from the nine other historic canals in Canada, is that we have four versions within very close proximity. And this is St. Catharines Thoreau, where you see this, this line is the First Canal, and First and Second, and they diverge a little bit, the first one is there, and the second one is partially buried and comes up here. The Third Canal also started in Port Toulouse and cut across the city, and now crosses the Fourth Canal here at Lock Three and goes in behind. And then of course, you've got the Fourth Canal, which is the one that's currently operating. So we can demonstrate to the public, to the traveling tourists, four versions, four different areas of engineering. And of course, the benefits to, say, the park down here, Centennial Park, you'll see the old, this had, in the centennial year, the city built this and had provincial plaques and totem pole, and you can see that, how it's really fallen, because of the city's priorities, of course, there are going to be hockey links and soccer fields and all those things. Many other local benefits, some other pictures. This is the Second Canal in behind Hudson Road in St. Catharines. And you see the lock walls are pretty much there, so it is doable, it's not impossible. This flight is about the benefits to Thoreau, but this is where the connection to Niagara Falls really begins. This lock over here was a stone lock built to connect the First Canal to the, well, I don't know, they called it the Welland River up there, and I guess the only river in the country that gets, becomes a creek as it gets bigger. But I guess, when you get to the Niagara River, it's just a creek, and fair enough. Chippewa Creek then was the end of the Welland Canal. The first one was built to Port Robinson, this lock was built to take it into the Chippewa Creek, and then it came out to the Niagara River. Chippewa with a history of shipbuilding and a history of the canal, I guess the trick was you could bring your boat out of the canal and hook it up to the horse before it headed off down to the falls. And so they had a tow path all the way up the river to Fort Yerkes. And of course, that didn't last too long before they decided to try and dig it straight to Port Colburn. But this lock and that connection stayed in place for another 50 or 60 years, and in 1922, you can see the condition of that lock at that point. So there's a little bit more of some images of the old canals through Thoreau. And what I wanted to get to was the benefits to Niagara Falls, of course. And as you can see, this is partly why we do, you know, why it's a regional project, because there are benefits to all the canal corridor cities. And so the Niagara Falls benefits, as we see them, and I hope you can confirm these or add what you see, what might be additional benefits. But basically, the connection to Chippewa River, Chippewa Creek, and we think an added interest that may extend the stay of the tourists already in Niagara Falls by an extra day, by connecting them up the Chippewa to the Welland Canals, and where they can see how those 700-foot-long fladers get around Niagara Falls. How do they get from Lake Ontario to Lake Erie? How do they get to Chicago? Well, the Welland Canal is just 15 minutes up the road, and come and have a look. But also, it'll strengthen, I think, the appeal of the Millennium Trail and the Parkway Drive from Chippewa to Port Robinson along Fort Allenberg. When we first did the Welland Canal Parkway Corridor Strategy at the very beginning, that was one of the things that Mayor Thompson had talked about, was, you know, make sure that there's a sort of a half-loop, a connection, and the Chippewa Creek is a great opportunity to do that. And we're not there yet, but I think this heritage designation will help us get there. And of course, the benefits of Waynefleet is kind of an interesting connection of Marshville Heritage Park, but there is a lock down there that actually, when you get through Waynefleet, you get to Strong Ness, and you can lock down into Port Maitland, into the Lake Erie within a couple of locks. And there's one there that has been cleaned up a lot, and there's two of them that could be restored, and then you could come off at Port Maitland, come up the Theater Canal, into the Welland Canal, and back down to Fort Colburn. Now that's one of the things that, as I say, think in terms of the Falkirk Wheel, and say, nothing's impossible, and look at what the real potential is, if you're able to think that big and get some federal support to do it. So from the region's point of view, it will build on our Welland Canals master plan, on the Great Niagara Circle Route, by adding the heritage interest and improve the sites of interest accessible through the circle route and the Welland Canal Driving Route. So strengthen Niagara's tourism strategy all the way around the region. It follows up on a report that was done in 2003, highlighting the Canada, transport Canada lands behind General Motors, that could very well be a asset park and offer an opportunity for another destination in Niagara. It does support our brownfields and smart growth policies, as you can see from the keg and Lipster Mill, and as you can see in Welland, if you've been downtown Welland for the recreational channel, and how the, I guess, the West Bank has been redeveloped with several high-rise apartment buildings. So the whole list of why now, and I think we've pretty much touched on those, this is Neptune Staircase again in St. Catharines, but this is really why now. These are locks from the Second Canal, and they're falling apart, and no city from St. Catharines to Fort Colburn has the assets or has the financial resources to really treat them as a national heritage site, and we really think that should be a federal responsibility. To summarize it, the old structures are falling apart. The provincial green plan and places to grow are putting development pressures on the lands beside the old canals, so you want to do something with the plan in place, as opposed to trying to put a plan after a proposal comes in. Strengthening tourism, water quality, and opportunity to properly recognize and celebrate the Welland Canal's heritage before it is lost. So we're asking the federal government to join the region and the canal corridor municipalities in exploring the potential of this concept. And the most, I guess, to put a finest point on it, is that the federal government has this document, they promote national historic sites and tourism, and they talk about the special charm of historic canals, and they've got nine national historic canals, the Welland Canal does not make the list. The most successful, most productive canal in Canada, and it doesn't make it as a national historic site. So we're going to, we make the point to the federal government that the Welland Canals are part of the Great Lakes, St. Lawrence Navigation System, and other heritage components of the system, like the Lachine, and like Susanne Three Canal, have been designated as national historic sites, that a great deal of capital investment every year, and spend a great deal of money in operating, and we think the Welland Canal's Corridor deserves equal consideration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and your worship. This is, I hope the council has an opportunity to have a look at this, and we really appreciate your support so that we can go to EMO, saying we have all the canal corridors communities on board.
And Counselor Timms, perhaps there may be some questions for members of council. Are there any questions from Counselor, for Counselor Timms? Yes, Counselor Wayne?
To Nathan, are you looking for support for designation of the Welland Canals Corridor as a National Historic Corridor?
We do have a resolution, it's likely we're going to have the acting clerk read out in a moment, so you can certainly ask the question.
Yes, what we're looking for is the city council's support to seek this designation. We're suggesting the region should take the leadership role in collaboration with all the canal corridors, because those, the Heritage Board people told us, they want one comprehensive proposal.
And do you have the other municipalities on board already?
We have resolutions, pretty much this one, from Fort Colburn, Welland, Thoreau, and St. Catharines. And so we have a couple more we'd like to get on, like Waynefleet, and we certainly need Niagara Falls to be a part of that.
And I think this is a great initiative, I agree with you, Bruce, that this can certainly strengthen tourism, it'll add interest and recognition among potential visitors, and in fact, the municipal heritage is investigating the requirements for having the falls themselves declared a world heritage site, partly for the very same reason, so this can only be positive, and thank you for bringing it forward.
Counselor Fisher?
Mine's on the humorous slide. We talk about the Chippewa Creek. How often do you go there?
Well, actually, I've walked this whole circle route twice.
You haven't swam there, and you haven't boarded there, because if you go to the Chippewa Creek, as it is spelled, they'll all laugh at you, because we all go down to the crick.
Sorry, we'll correct the spelling there.
Member of council, we do ask Counselor May.
I just have a few questions, but if you get this project done, will that be accessible to local boaters?
Well, that's one of the things we don't want to rule out. What parts of it can you make accessible is really what the question is, and certainly the aim is to make it as accessible as possible to local boaters, because that's, we're missing an opportunity there, and there's various areas where you could get to it.
Okay, along with that, then, if you're going to do that, you'll probably be needing some bridges. Is that an interfere with traffic, anything else?
Yeah.
Well, it'll help traffic.
There's a number of places where you'd either want a bridge, or maybe you want something we discovered in Scotland, that image, what they were digging there was actually a drop lock. So what they did, rather than tear up the bridge, in the corner store beside it, in the apartment building, they built a drop lock, so basically, you drop before you get to the bridge, go under the bridge, and come up again. And that made it possible to reopen some of those canals in very developed neighborhoods, where the infrastructure disruption would be huge. So they thought about a new solution, and I thought it was really quite, it's open your eyes, that anything is possible, that you really want to pursue it.
And last question is, I know this is pretty hard to answer, but any idea what this would cost?
No.
Thank you.
Counselor Carrion?
Your worship, I'd be pleased to move the resolution as I read, I read it as it was going around. If all the council agrees, I'd be pleased to move it. I don't think we'd want to be behind Waynefleet in supporting the project.
That's fair. Well, we'll have the resolution read by acting clerk, if you don't mind, so if you're acting clerk.
Now, the post-resolution reads that Niagara Falls City Council supports some parts of both the designation of the Welland Canal Corridor as a National Heritage Corridor, that a heritage corridor plan be prepared as a collaboration among the corridor communities, the Niagara Region, the St. Lawrence Seaway Management Corporation, the WRCC, and the federal and provincial governments, that the city of Niagara Falls participate in a regional Welland Canals Heritage Corridor Symposium for the purpose of collecting and consolidating a database of all municipal and provincial heritage properties or sites, flagged or unflagged, related to the Welland Canals. Such database be used to fulfill the mandate of the city of Niagara Falls, the corridor municipalities, or sorry, such database be used to fulfill the mandate, yes, of the city of Niagara Falls. The corridor municipalities under the new Heritage Act of 2005, to create and maintain a register of heritage properties, landscapes, and sites belonging to municipality, and on lands under the stewardship of WRCC and St. Lawrence Seaway Management Corporation. Lastly, that the municipality of Niagara Falls supports the nomination of such heritage places by the province of Ontario to the Canadian Historic Sites Registry.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Carrion, seconded by Counselor Wayne. Any further discussion on the resolution and the motion? Having seen none, we'll call the vote, all those in favor. Motion is carried, Nancy. Thank you, Counselor Timms, we appreciate your interest in bringing this to us, a very interesting proposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to ask the Acting Clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
The public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit the incorporation of additional lands to provide additional parking, office space, and storage at eighty-seven, or sorry, eighty-two, seventy-eight, Goldstone Road, and four-zero-four-three, Taylor Road. Notice was given in accordance, first class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on June twenty-second, two thousand and seven, and by posting a sign on the Friday question. Anyone who wants notice of passing, passage of the zoning bylaw amendment, or to participate in any site plan process that is applicable, shall leave their name on the sign and sheets outside the conference chamber.
Thank you, Acting Clerk. At this time, I'd like to call on the Director of Planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darberson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The first application this evening is for a local restaurant facility known as Somebody's, located at the corner of Goldstone and Taylor Road. In terms of location, the property, there's two properties involved. The current restaurant and convenience store are located right in the corner of Goldstone and Taylor, and the property directly to the south is a current single-family dwelling located at four-zero-four-three, Taylor Road. The proposed application, the applicant has requested amendments to both the city's official plan and zoning bylaw for a neighborhood commercial plaza at eight-two-seven-eight Goldstone Road and a single detached dwelling at four-zero-four-three, Taylor Road. The amendments are requested to use a single detached dwelling for an office and storage purpose, and the land surrounding it for parking purposes, all in conjunction with the neighborhood plaza. No expansion or other changes to the plaza are being proposed. This is the site plan for the project. The current site plan to the north is a restaurant and convenience store. There is some parking located at the front, from the side and to the rear. The property, residential property itself would be integrated with the parking facility and to provide additional parking spaces for the whole of the project. A small dwelling unit would be retained, and that dwelling unit would be used for office and storage purposes associated with the existing restaurant facility. The lands are designated good general agricultural under the official plan. The subject lands are requested to be placed under a site-specific special policy to recognize the existing plaza and to allow the development of a parking area and use of the building at four-zero-four-three, Taylor Road in conjunction with the plaza. A minor expansion to the neighborhood commercial zoning for the purpose of providing additional parking is considered appropriate for the following reasons. Area does not intensify the commercial use of the property. Top of generation will not be increased, and disturbances caused by off-site parking will be reduced. The project will provide an opportunity to improve site conditions through the application of site plan control. The project does not interfere with permitted uses under the good general agricultural designation, and the project allows for a logical extension of parking which is needed, and which in turn would be integrated with existing facilities. The official, the following measures have been proposed by the applicant to address potential impacts on surrounding properties. Firstly, a five-foot landscape strip is proposed along the south and west property lines, restricting the size and occupancy of the existing restaurant, therefore no expansion will take place, restricting the use of the former dwelling to an office, to an office and storage use facility, and finally, a wooden string fence installed along adjacent properties for different purposes. In terms of zoning, the current zoning is neighborhood commercial. Both properties are requested to be placed under a site-specific NC zone. The land is controlled as proposed by the applicant, restricting size, occupancy, and use of existing structures, will need to be incorporated in incident-mending bylaw. Staff further recommends that our landscape buffer strip along the south property line be increased from five to fifteen feet. That is the property that would be impacted, we think, most by the proposed parking or expansions. Site plan control, NC lands are subject to site plan control. The following matters need to be addressed and will be addressed. Location of proper garbage enclosures away from abiding landowners, provision of closed board fence and tree planting along the property lines, provision of adequate screening and lighting in the parking area, proper drainage drainage. It's our conclusion that the requested amendments to the official plan and zoning bylaw to prevent the proposed development can be supported by the following reasons. If the requested uses are unconform with the official plan criteria for considering land use changes, and secondly, provided that the recommended measures to mitigate impacts on neighboring properties are implemented in the mending bylaw and site plan approval, the requested installation of office and storage uses and the expansion of the parking area are considered appropriate. Complaints about property standards, noise, and destructive behavior should be directed to appropriate authorities. It's our recommendation this evening that council approve the proposed applications for both office and storage purposes and the land surrounding it as a parking lot in conjunction with the neighborhood plaza. That is our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darberson. I'm going to just make a few comments. First of all, the members of public are advised, failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral written submission at this public meeting. And this time, I'm going to entertain a question from Councilor Peter Enzil.
Thanks, your worship. I noticed in the report that the report talks about two different kinds of fences. One is a wood screen fence, and the other is a closed board fence. I mean, I know we generally talk about a closed board fence. Can you just wondering if staff can elaborate on what a wood screen fence is?
King Passley, Mr. Darberson?
Thank you. The terms are interchangeable. When we deal with residential and commercial interfaces, it's usually a wood-type fence, very solid, closed board for not letting current lights shine through, and very durable. So wood screen or closed board essentially is the same thing.
Thank you. At this time, the council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak for the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone here other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Please come forward. If you'd be kind enough to identify yourself as well and your address, and you do have a ten-minute, a ten-minute limit, if you would, please.
My name is Anthony Boncorian, not a resident of Niagara Falls, but I am speaking on behalf of a family friend, Mr. Joe Striguzzi. He did submit a letter to record, one of the public meetings. For the record, Mr. Striguzzi is opposed to this application, obviously because of his close proximity to the property in question, that he lives at forty-fifty-five, Taylor Road. He believes that the increased parking area most significantly affects his residential dwelling. He has a, quite a nice property, and feels that it's going to reduce the value of his property. The proposed plan that was submitted, the revised plan, the plan before that showed a garbage enclosure along the back corner of the property, and now it appears to be located right behind the residence, that is in question to be used for a office and storage area, which brings it even closer proximity to Mr. Striguzzi's property, and that poses a problem. I think, you know, worst-case scenario, if something like this were to go through, it might be better to relocate that garbage enclosure maybe closer to parking spaces number twenty-nine, which would bring it further away from his residence and a reasonable distance away from the outdoor patio and restaurant. I do appreciate the inclusion of the planning department's comments regarding the fifteen-foot setback of landscape buffer. That would, that is also a good point. But I think that, I'm wondering if the minimum landscape requirements, I'm not sure if the minimum landscapers really have minimum green space requirements for a property of this nature are being adhered to. It looks like there's not much landscaping as far as that residential dwelling. I, we also feel that it is agricultural land, but it is typically generally used for single-family residential, and it would be preferable to maintain that property as a single-family residence. It would be more in keeping with the surrounding neighbors, and it would also significantly reduce the impact on Mr. Striguzzi's property. And if at all possible, if the applicant and or the planning department could work that in, into maintaining that, that house as a single-family residence, and increasing the landscaping around that for residential purposes. It appears that in one of the original letters that were submitted from consultant that they're proposing to provide, twice to require parking here, it is a neighborhood commercial property, and twice to require property, parking, I'm not sure it would be really necessary. If the parking spaces along Mr. Pro- Mr. Striguzzi's property were to be removed and increase the landscaping in that area, it would be a lot better. I do realize that there is a parking problem on Taylor Road. Parking enforcement, I know, has been dealing with this for some time, but I don't, I don't think we need quite this many parking spaces, and larger property between the neighborhood commercial plaza and Mr. Striguzzi's property would definitely benefit the neighbors and Mr. Striguzzi. At this time, we're hoping that these comments can be incorporated with the proposed site plan. Mr. Striguzzi reserves a right to take this to the Ontario Municipal Board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boncorian. Any questions of the presented speaker? Thank you. If anyone else other than the applicant wishes to speak, please come forward. Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Darlene Ingram. I live at four-zero-eight-six, Taylor Road. And I had sent in a letter stating my concerns, and I'm not sure if everybody has a copy of that, I'm not sure about this one, too. But my issue is a safety issue, and, um...
We do have your copy here.
Yes, I do have my copy.
Well, we have, we have a copy of this.
Okay, very good. Mine is a safety issue in that, right now, as it stands, we're looking at increasing the parking on Taylor Road, in this, in this lot. The road as it stands right now is two lanes, one sidewalk. In future, we are told we are getting four lanes. I'm not sure about the second sidewalk. We have a school at the corner. This restaurant is very successful. It's very well-liked. It's very busy. People are in and out of there to take help, order meals, whatever. My concern is safety for children. There are people with special needs, there are people with hearing issues. At this time, I, I feel that it would be very dangerous myself. I have watched how many people let their children walk to that corner store on their own. Very few. It will be even less in the future. It's just a very dangerous street as it is. As the street gets larger, we're going to have more issues, and with the school, I think we're going to have possibly more fatalities. Um, let me see, uh, yes. What we have kind of talked about before, or just recently, was that people should use the sidewalk, so therefore we will have four lanes of traffic. We will have, say, one sidewalk. People will have to cross from one side of the road, cross to the sidewalk, walk up to the corner, and then cross again, because this entrance and exit were sixty-two cars, and there are people that don't drink, but there are people that do drink. There are people taking their time, and there are people that do not take their time. With people coming around that corner, cars do not necessarily slow down or stop before they turn. I've been in the intersection where I had to walk, and cars turned and cut me off. What if that was a child that didn't know what to do? So I think it deserves further study. I have great, great concerns for children. There are a lot of children in that neighborhood. So bottom line is that I respectfully request to table the issue until a traffic study is done for the four lanes, and an impact study done, and the sound study done. Plane needs to be more informed, have a more informed base before they, they go further, because this is, this is for now, but with the future coming, with those four lanes, I have, I have great concerns.
Thank you. Any questions of Mrs. England? Councilor Thompson?
Yes, through you to whoever is responsible for engineering, the question you asked with respect to Taylor Road and the four lanes, many people who called me about this application expressing concern, one of the things that kept coming up was four lanes on Taylor Road. Is this a possibility in the near future, or what are we talking about here?
Mr. Holden, can you answer that question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have provisions in our development charges background study for a NEA to be done on this section of Taylor Road. Unfortunately, we don't have it scheduled in our budget till about 2010. So as part of that exercise, we'd be looking at pedestrian activity on both sides, but, and we'd be involving the region because they have jurisdiction over that, that intersection.
Okay. Are you, are you suggesting the EA would look at the, the need for four lanes there? Are you suggesting that this would be four lanes right through to Beaverton Road, or what are you talking about?
Well, the EA would look at the existing growth and future growth over the next fifteen, twenty years. But as we discussed earlier tonight, most of this area has basically been built out. There is a large volume of traffic that are using Taylor Road as a shortcut to get from the north end to the south end of the city, and the balance has increased a lot quicker than we had anticipated.
Well, I think with the changes that have been made on, on Motto's Road through the four lanes, I think maybe some improvements on Taylor Road, but I really don't see that this is a four-lane roadway in the near future, maybe in talking twenty-five years down the road, but that would come on the EA, is that what you're suggesting?
Sure. Uh, yes, that would, that would result.
Councilor England?
Thank you, Mr. Maranheim, this is Ingram. I know you've been here many times on this issue, and many times I spoke on behalf of the neighbors opposed to Somebody's developments and the problems that you had going on there, but I heard this, and my first thought was, thank goodness, he's putting a parking lot there to accommodate the cars that we've had to fight forever, who are still parking in the no parking signs on Taylor Road. I looked at it as, as an improved safety measure, as opposed to, I think the train of thought you're looking at is, that it's an increased safety problem. So, yeah, I don't, I, I look, I try, I went down there today, I tried to look at it that way, and I would look at it more, you're not going to have people walking from the bar at night, which was the problems we've had many times, urinating on front lawns, being allowed, parking their cars on front yard properties. They won't have to make that truck anymore at night, they just have to go in the back to that parking lot. So I, to me, my, uh, the mind lines are, I think it's a better situation putting that parking lot there than having them come up and down Taylor Road.
In one respect, I agree, but on the other respect, you've got an entrance and an exit going in and out, the people come in and out quickly, and to get onto, at busy times, Taylor Road is a nightmare at the corner. People are turning, these people are negotiating the turn, and people coming in or out of that parking lot. So that is my concern, and if you have a child, children going to the store, negotiating that parking lot with those cars coming in and going out, that is one of my great concerns. The parking itself, fine, that gets cars off of the road, but we still have issues that I think should be addressed in the long term.
Thank you very much, Mrs. England. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to us, man? Please come forward. And once again, for the record.
Uh, my name is Cindy Scouting. I live at forty-sixty-three, Taylor Road.
Thank you very much, welcome.
Um, your worship and members of the council. First, I'd like to thank all the councilmen that have come around to look at this problem. I think the planning department is making a mistake. They're giving... They're giving all the all the all their right reasons and not listening to us. There's so many issues that you're not considering that affect us. We've lived in our house for twenty-seven years. We bought behind a little variety store, which was a, you know, ice cream parlor and a hair salon, a little restaurant opened up in there, but you've got the outdoor patio problems, and then you open a whole can of worms here. And this just seems that he's just fighting off more and more and more. You know, it's, I understand that the commercial area is on Thorlstone Road, and now you're creeping it into Taylor Road. So, I don't know, where do you draw the line? Can everybody on Thorlstone Road buy a property and then be sure that they're going to get some more property behind them and throw more into somebody else's neighborhood? It just doesn't seem the right thing to do. The noise is the big issue, and the noise is the problem late at night. The school's on all the time, all every night. So what kind of noise there can you put up for us that's going to stop the noise in each storehouse? A six-foot fence isn't going to work. I think I think you're you're expanding that commercial area. I just don't think it's the right thing to do. If you're going to expand, you should be looking at property on either side of them and not taking it into the neighborhood. I don't know. People down here have had headwinds from all here. I don't know what else to say. And we're starting looking through your head on what we can do with this.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Diodati?
Yes, Your Worship. Ms. Skelding asked a good question. I just hope we can get an answer from staff. Is there some kind of sound barrier fencing that can be put in on the south side?
Anybody, staff can answer that question? Mr. Darbison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fencing is a very key consideration in this kind of situation we're dealing with, a commercial entity and an existing residential area. We've had, we've experimented with all kinds of fencing in this community, and some of the fences that have been erected where we have commercial properties even closer to the budding residential ones have proven to be fairly successful. I can think of a very elaborate fence that was built right at Draven Road, where the gas station and the Tim Hortons kiosk facility. A very substantial, very substantial wood fence was created there as proof as a noise barrier and a visual block was above the standard maybe that we would normally provide. But those are the kinds of situations or offenses that we had installed. Critical in our recommendation this evening is is the impact on the neighborhood to the south of this particular property. And for that reason, we're recommending increased provisions, not just five feet of buffer strip, but three times that plus a fence, plus lighting that's directed away from residential properties, plus plus the relocation of that garbage enclosure to somewhere else or more distant from that property. We really think that that we should be concerned about the impact on that particular residential property and provide all the mitigation measures possible. And that's the basis for our recommendation this evening, not to ignore the impact issue, but try to resolve a parking problem with a successful business that provides reasonable protection to those surrounding properties.
Counselor Peter Ansel?
Thanks, Your Worship. I also was going to ask basically the same question as Counselor Diodati, and that is, in regards to the fence, I know that when I was at Ms. Skelding's property, that was one of the issues that came up was whether or not instead of a closed-board fence, the applicant, Mr. Rock, I could look at something that was more like a noise attenuation fence. And I'm not too sure whether or not counsel actually gets in the business of of recommending these, but I think that the residents, those that are directly affected by it anyway, would be, I guess, would be happier with something like that than a wood board fence. So the questions I already went and asked, so.
Thank you. Counselor Mays?
Yeah, I have a question. Most of my questions have been answered already, except for one thing, we've already been talking about drainage and whatnot on Taylor Road. Could I ask Mr. Darbison, this parking lot, is that going to be all paved?
Mr. Darbison?
Sweetie, Mr. Mayor, no. As a matter of fact, there's no stormwater drainage provided in this property. It's a rural, light, coastal area. The stormwater facilities are not available, therefore, it's the recommendation misperouts that the property, the fence not be gravelled and stormwater be directed away from the adjacent properties at this time.
Anything else you'd like to add, Ms. Skelding?
No, I don't think that. I do think Mr. Strakuzzi's spokesman recommended the house be lived in rather than turn it into an office or a storage. I think that's a good idea, that it would have to be maintained.
Thank you. We'll have the applicant to address it. Thank you very much. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Anyone else? Monk, for the record, please.
Anthony Strakuzzi. I currently reside at 4055 Taylor Road. The property right adjacent to the property in question. I'd just like to request that a sound study be conducted on my property, on Mr. and Mrs. Skelding's property, and any other adjacent landowners that would appreciate the numbers that would come out of a sound study, just to ensure kind of that peace of mind to see what what kind of actual destruction is being is being brought to our neighborhood. As well, just on that last note, on the note of the parking lot being gravelled and not paved, I'd like to know how Mr. Rock is going to ensure that these spaces are not overcrowded, given the gravel circumstance? How are lines being maintained? How will we be ensured that there will not be a hundred parking spaces as opposed to sixty-nine?
Okay. Do you have a question? Mr. Darbison, can you handle that, or is that for the applicant?
I can for that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to mention?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, and members of council, we'd like to ask the applicant or his representatives to come forward. Mr. Brady?
It's your staff. My name is Rick Brady, and I represent the owner of Somebody's. As was mentioned by one of the aldermen this evening, the issue of parking in this neighborhood has been to this council on a number of times in the past. It's clear that Somebody's and the convenience store require more parking than is present on the site. Street parking has been eliminated on Taylor, as you're aware, and also on Vegeture across the street because of the need of parking in those areas that will be used by the people at Somebody's. Currently, people are parking at the neighboring elementary school, and therefore, and classing facilities are going to come on over to the property. There are some issues associated with that, and this parking lot would provide sufficient parking space to be able to eliminate those kinds of problems in the neighborhood. As you're aware, the restaurant and the convenience store have been in this neighborhood for a very long period of time, and they're legal uses. My client is not looking to expand. It's been stated by Mr. Darbison, and that particular comment was given to each of the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting that we held earlier on this on this matter. There was some concern expressed by neighbors at that meeting that if the parking was going to be increased, therefore, there will be an increase in the restaurant, and that's not the case. We're simply trying to deal with the parking problem on site. If you look at the site plan, you'll see that there are eight parking spaces that are on the east side of the existing convenience store. Those parking spaces back out onto onto Taylor at the present time. The recommendations of your municipal staff as a part of this application is to take all of that area, in fact, to take all of the area from the existing road allowance all the way over to basically adjacent to Chinatown store for road lighting purposes. So that those eight parking spaces that are there at the present time are going to be eliminated in the future through the activities of municipality. That will only make the problem of parking more difficult. My client is attempting to provide something that's needed in this neighborhood, i.e. more parking, and to provide more than adequate landscaping. Also, the expanded parking allows for the garbage collection area to be screened and to be more hidden on the property. At the meeting that we held with the neighbors, we had originally proposed that the garbage area would be down in the southwest corner of the property. There's a square you can see in the southwest corner, and we were going to put the the garbage container in that area and screen it. And there were neighbors who suggested that, no, they wanted it to a more central location on the property. So we moved it in and moved it over near the the existing home on the property. And for this evening, that's not a space that that someone's interested in as well. So we'd like to very much work with the neighbors to find a spot on the property that is both somewhat invisible but also away from the neighbors. And we think that the site plan process is a is a good time to do that. We've tried to deal with it initially at our first meeting. We thought we'd had a solution that was better, and for this evening, that perhaps it isn't. But we're, I'll be making a recommendation at the end of my presentation that hopefully can help us move forward with that. The neighborhood meeting also talked, and there was a little bit of comment this evening, though traffic concerns, that this particular parking lot would create a lot of traffic concerns in and about this area. I'm going to suggest to you that that's not the case at all. In fact, having the two access points onto Taylor will eliminate the need for any cars to back up onto Taylor. As it is right now, when someone comes in the existing parking area, which is quite tight and doesn't quite meet the standards, it's unfortunate that from time to time they have to back out of that area to get onto Taylor. Having the U through the parking lot in the way that the site plan is organized, that will no longer be the case. So the cars parking will always be able to drive out onto Taylor, and there won't be any backing, which will improve the issue in terms of safety and traffic onto Taylor. I also point out that your municipal staff, in reviewing this particular application, your municipal engineering staff outlined that they felt that there would be no negative increase in traffic associated with this because, and primarily because, there is no expansion to the use. The use itself is as as is. There's no expansion to it, and there's no change to it. And so since that's been fixed, all we're dealing with is the traffic that's already I'd like to try to deal with some of the issues that were raised by neighbors before giving some concluding comments. We've talked about the traffic enclosure. Your planning staff have outlined that on the southern flank of the property, that there is an interest in having a five-foot landscaping setback to be increased to fifteen feet. I've discussed that with my client. We have no issues with that. We can still maintain a good area in terms of circulation for cars on the property. It may reduce the number of parking spaces by one or two, but nonetheless, we understand the need for the the additional landscaping in that area. It can be provided for in terms of the design of the site, and and it can therefore provide for more trees and more landscaping in that area. And as Mr. Darbison has already pointed out, it is somewhere in the neighborhood of three times what is normal in the interface between commercial entities and residential entities. Noise is also something which has been raised this evening, and the noise that's been raised this evening hasn't necessarily been a noise that's been raised about the parking lot, but rather it's a noise that's been concerning with the restaurant itself. And there are some noises associated with restaurants that certainly is the case. When you have a landscaping strip in place, and also when we have a good, solid woodboard fence along those areas, I think that those noise issues can be resolved. Also, I would point out that my client has been attempting to monitor the issues associated with noise and dealing with that, and continues to to try to make strides in that area. Talked a little bit about the safety issue. I understand a number of you who've been to the site, so I'm not going to go into too much detail, but nonetheless, I think it's fair for those of you who have been to the site to realize that the park with the sidewalk associated with Taylor is on the opposite side. So the sidewalk where the students and the children would be walking along to go to the school, which is to the north, would be not on this side of Taylor, but rather on the eastern side of Taylor. And at the interface or the intersection of Taylor and Thorlstone Road, you have a signalized intersection. You also have a pedestrian signalization. And in the and in the school term, that area has the school guards. So therefore, you have an intersection that has as many safety features as any I've seen within the city of Niagara Falls already in place. And it would be reasonable for me to assume that anyone who's taking their child to the to the to the commercial store at the corner would likely walk along the sidewalk on the eastern side of of Taylor and then cross at the site at the at the crosswalk over to the store. And therefore, safety issues have been addressed by the establishment of the area at the present There was some question about the fact that was the parking lot going to be paved or gravelled? And the answer that was given was that it would be gravelled, and there was some concern that if it's gravelled, therefore, the parking would not be monitored to the same degree or it would be difficult in terms of outlining it, if I take that being the question that was asked. But we plan, we do plan to use the the site as gravel at the present time, and we intend to continue to use it as a gravel parking lot until such time as there are stormwater facilities on Taylor. Mr. Coleman discussed this evening that there is the potential for an EA at some time in the future for the expansion of Taylor, and in association with that, it's likely, although not already protected, but it's likely that stormwater management facilities would be in place. And at that point in time, we would be directing the parking lot through catch basins to the stormwater management facility, and it will become paved. The intermediary period of time, the gravel, the gravel would be pressed, it wouldn't just be sort of loose on its property, and the lines would be painted, and they would be painted sufficiently to be in place. And those provisions of having aligned parking on a parking facility such as this are within your site plan, within site plan control, and certainly, site plan control will emanate throughout all of this property as the property's development continues forward. So in conclusion, regional planning staff, city planning staff have supported the expansion of this parking lot in the area where it is. They recognize that it is, in fact, dealing with an existing problem in this neighborhood and is dealing with it in a responsible and straightforward fashion. There's been no agency that's raised any local, regional, or provincial issues associated with this expansion. As I've said before, my client supports the notion of landscaping, and the additional landscaping was outlined along the southern flank. And some of the issues that were raised this evening are really site plan issues. And at that point, my client would would like to offer that following council's decision this evening and moving forward in terms of the site plan, that once a further site plan has been developed, that we have a second meeting with the neighbors, that we'll discuss those site plan issues and follow in the adoption of the support. And thank you for your patience, Mr. Brady.
Yes, a few questions. I need, I know you'd like to answer a question.
Mr. Brady and Mr. Coleman, are you looking, did you say you're looking at graveling once the EA is complete? I'm sorry, paving when the EA is complete?
We're looking at the possibility of of paving the lot as soon as storm sewers are available on Taylor. So therefore, the the storm drainage can be adequately dealt with through catch basins and then taken out to a to a storm sewer. In the intermediary time, we'll continue with the gravel.
So you had me till now?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Your comment, trying to use your your argument that nobody's going to have to back out here, they're going to be able to build a loop around, would work for me if it was paved with the illuminated lines so that people know not to park to the very west in that jetted-up corner. I don't believe for a minute that if you put a gravel parking lot there, that you're not going to pack as many cars in there as possible, and it's going to alleviate the backlog. I think you're just going to create a bigger problem. If you were leaving here with a condition that that'd be a paved parking lot, I can understand that, but I don't think you're going to achieve your objective while it still sits as gravel.
I understand your point. I'm responding to the comments of the of the municipality in terms of outlining it in as gravel, but would be open to, you know, oiling it or something like that to make it a firm surface to make sure that your issue associated with drainage is your issue associated with drainage is addressed, and we can bring that back as a part of a site plan issue, if you wish.
Okay, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not a firm believer in site plan really helping residents. I've seen more site plan agreements come through here where the residents said what they had to say, and nothing got done. We're actually dealing with one over in the McDonald's on, in the Orlando Drive residence. So I'm not a big firm believer in residents having a huge say in site plan. I would like to see it tonight, though, and if there's a motion made, I would put a condition on it that be paved and there's delineated lines, because anywhere else is going to create, I think, a disaster out there.
Counselor, there may be a problem with your idea of the paving. Not sure if Mr. Holman or Mr. Darbison would like to deal with that. Mr. Holman? Would that actually work as a caution?
The general grading of the land falls from, I guess, northeast to southwest. If you hard surface that area, we're going to need to have a proper outlet for it, and right now, one doesn't exist.
That's right. Counselor?
So when you say oil over, if that was the word that you used, can you do that and still paint delineated lines and make sure that the parking spaces are highlighted?
Yes.
Oh, that, I just learned something new, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Townsend, Counselor Carroll.
Thank you, through you at this point, to maybe Mr. Holman. Mr. Holman, a few weeks ago, we had, and one of the concerns tonight is the noise factor. We were going to move forward with having some people trained and trying to get equipment to try to determine what the decibel readings were when we had complaints such as this. Are we moving along with that, or maybe Mr. McDonald?
Actually, it was Mr. Costelli.
Yes, Mr. Costelli.
The area process of how sourcing out the appropriate dispel and leave and the staff for that area to force the content to get.
Anyway, when I read the report, I saw that the parking lot was going to be stolen, paved because of the drainage problem, and I've seen that many times before. It can be very difficult to put line painting on there. Anyway, if you're going to continue with an application adjacent to a residential area, you better be a good neighbor. And obviously, from along the complaints and concerns being brought forward regarding noise, noise problems, garbage, odor, and other problems, there have been some problems there, Mr. Brady. And I see the merit in the site plan and getting the parking resolved, but I'm wondering how are you going to give some satisfaction to the people in the area about, you know, we've got the garbage bins still adjacent to the residential house. I've never seen a residential property used as an office and a storage area that was any credit to a residential area. I have concerns about that. Once the Kaler Road affects, and I'm not optimistic about that happening very soon, you're going to lose a lot of your parking spaces, and what does that do to the entrance to your landscaping on Kaler Road? Does that touch that at all?
The landscaping that we've shown on Kaler Road, which you can see, which is on the eastern flank, is landscaping which would not be touched, or we don't believe would be touched, within the context of any expansion. That's to be determined. Certainly, the front yard in front of the existing house is left there. One of the other questions that you had asked was about the existing home. We had thought that it would be better to leave the home on the property, so it would continue the trend of residential dwellings along Kaler, rather than to remove it and then bring the parking lot further out and closer to Kaler, which would create it more obvious. So it was an anticipation to try to fit within the neighborhood context. Certainly, the location of garbage facilities has been an issue on many a commercial development in the past, and we thought that the original location that we had talked about in the southwest corner was a reasonable one, given the immediate types of buildings in the area. It was not suggested as such, so we've moved it to another location. There's been a suggestion made this evening that perhaps something close to parking space at probably eight or nine, or a good spot, eight would be a better spot. We can look at all those kinds of issues. One of the things that we are clearly going to do, and it's been always a part of the application, is that the garbage bins would be enclosed, so there would be a wooden fence, similar if not identical to the kind of fencing material that would be used on the perimeter of the property, that would be used to enclose the garbage bins. The existing garbage bins on the property have no enclosures around them, therefore, they tend to have some difficulties, and they tend to be fairly obvious. We expect that through site plan control, the garbage bin enclosures can be enforced, and it's certainly something that is a part of this application.
The noise factor, is that because of the doors opened? Do you have an outdoor patio as a entertainment? What is happening there?
There is an outdoor patio on the western part of the property, it's there, and I'm not sure if the noise is associated with that, or if noise is associated with the doors opening, as the case may be. There are no bands that play out there. I understand there have been some in the past, but certainly, my client is going to ensure that there's no open music, which is under the patio or inside the restaurant itself.
Oh, we have not problems with the noise from the commercial areas that are exempt from the bylaw, so here we have an opportunity to try to make sure that the residential properties are protected, and if we get the proper equipment to monitor that, then we can do some proper enforcement, which we haven't been able to do in the past. The fencing around the property is going to be a 15-foot buffer. Is it possible to move the fence in to the, in 15 feet and put the landscape buffer on the outside, so that the residential property adjacent to that would be looking at the landscaped area, rather than a board fence at the edge of the property?
Something I've never thought about. There may be issues associated with enclosures that would be a difficulty over time. Certainly, there may be difficulties associated with the landscaping being maintained, because it would be on the outside.
Better to talk to Mr. Stern, maybe?
Perhaps, perhaps. I'm not completely adverse to it. I think there may be more problems associated with it than there are benefits associated with it, but we can talk about that at the site plan speech.
I think I have concerns about the residential property being maintained, the buffer and the noise factor, how you're going to get rid of the problem of noise, and of course, the garbage facility, and I think you've got some real concerns. And if there is a noise factor, it's going to be monitored in the future, and something will have to be done about it, regardless of what happens. The property there slopes off to the south, so even putting up fences is going to be a bit of a problem, because the noise will carry over top of the fence if the topography drops out to the south. Is it that?
It may, but we're also looking at some landscaping in that area, and we're hoping that the landscaping can consist in both the noise buffers and the fence. I guess it's done on many of the hotels in the city.
Counselor Carroll.
Thank you, Your Worship. Unfortunately, this is not one that I'm pleased to support. I understand what the neighbors are going to go through. It's not that it's a commercial use, it's the particular use that it is. It's a bar and a restaurant, which, as you know, we have problems every week. Noise, garbage, parking, patrons coming out at 12, one o'clock at night, which is a problem for the residents. What I was going to suggest, though, you could delineate, could you not, the parking spaces with portable curbs?
Yes, we could. There are a variety of ways that could be done.
I think you're going to have to delineate the parking spaces in the in and the out with portable curbs, because there's no other way to keep this from becoming a mess of cars and just parking wherever they want to park.
Any other questions, yes, Counselor Giadati?
I just would like, Mr. Brady, maybe you address the sound wall that was brought up. I know they used one behind Sobeys, which used to be Camisos, and as mentioned, they use one at the gas station on Lundy's Lane. I'm just wondering, what can be done there? Because it's a real concern. I mean, bars close at, you know, one o'clock in the morning, doors are going to be slamming, it's going to be noisy when you're in the middle of the sleep. What can we do to minimize? And I mean, I know there's vegetation, it's going to take a while to mature. What can we do in the immediate, rather than leaving it to the site plan? I'm not, I'm with Ms. Iannoni here, I'm not as comfortable leaving it to site plan. I want to know that we've got something in place that's proactive to deal with the noise issue.
The implementation of any form of fencing on this property would have to be a site plan condition. It's not something that can be dealt with as a zoning condition. Nonetheless, clearly, it's shown on the representation that we have here, that we're talking about putting in a, you can call it board-on-board, you can call it screen fence, if you will, but something that is of the grade that is normally used when you're dealing with commercial and residential interfaces. One of the things that we've already agreed upon here is that this particular interface will be much wider in terms of the landscape area, at least in the sensitive area. Those areas that tourists speak of have much, much smaller spatial setbacks in terms of the landscaping. So I'm looking at something that would certainly create a barrier in terms of the headlights, so that it would be tight board-on-board, it would certainly deal with noise issues, but that's the kind of fencing that we're going to have.
Your Worship, if I could just continue. So I mean, what have we got to do? I can understand board-on-board is great for sight, for lights and whatnot, it doesn't do a lot for sound. And I'm just wondering, I personally, you know, I still, I'm challenged. I think it's a great idea in terms of getting the parking issues off of the street and whatnot, but I don't think it's, these people deserve the right to quiet enjoyment of their property, and considering the nighttime hours of a business like this, I think the fencing needs to be addressed in a better way, and I don't think board-on-board or woodscreen fencing is the right answer.
If I may, I was very fortunate last week in that I was able to be on vacation. I was traveling through Massachusetts and Rhode Island, and I was interested to see that the state of Massachusetts is now using board-on-board as their sanitation fences along the highways. They no longer want to use the concrete because they're ugly, and they want to make sure that they have high-quality aesthetics along their highways, and I understand that the city of Niagara Falls has talked about that in the past. Board-on-board fences are not something that should be looked at as having low sound qualities associated with them, depending upon the actual design of the fence. One of the things that you might want to think about, and one of the reasons that I think that there are some issues associated with some of the fences, is that to allow the fences to be a little bit higher. The city of Niagara Falls has, bylaw stipulates the height of the fence, and I think if you want it to be proactive in that sense, and I would certainly encourage you to do so, to simply suggest that the fence, particularly on the southern flank, be of eight feet in height, and I think you'll find that the height of the fence is a much easier and stronger way of dealing with noise than the material within the fence itself. This is a suggestion.
Counselor Mays?
Yes, I think that's another, same thing I'm concerned about is the sound. Another thing, too, at the back of the restaurant, I noticed the outdoor patio. Is there a sound barrier there presently? And if not, can there be one put there?
There is currently no sound barrier associated with the outdoor patio. There is some minimal fencing along the western side of that area, but it's not of the type of fencing that we've been discussing this evening.
So at this corner, right here, I think there's considerable noise, from what I understand with talking with the residents, and probably some of that noise could be eliminated with a little fence there of a sound barrier or something, is that possible?
What we're looking at as a part of this particular development is the overall site coming under site plan control, so therefore, the fences along that western area could also be included and upgraded, if you will, from the existing conditions.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ayala, tell me your.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In my mind, the noise barrier wall is a make or break for me. I was out there today, while they understand this as staff recommendation, the board-on-board fence isn't going to do it for them. You know, we don't live beside it, I can hardly think that you or I would tolerate very much of any perceived noise that might come from a bar, but I will say this, the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. There's not a great history here. So if you're asking us to take the leap to believe that the developer will do his best to make the neighbors happy, you can sell that somewhere else, because it hasn't worked here before. So I guess I would say to you, is he opposed to putting a noise barrier wall up there? Because at this point, I can't see the neighbors being happy with anything less, and I know I won't support anything less.
Brady?
My client reiterates that we're interested in perhaps an extended height fence, wooden fence, that would, the peculiarities of it could be looked at at the site plan stage, but it would be a fence, perhaps of eight feet in height, but that's what we're proposing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brady. Any other questions, members of council, those present? Okay, at this time, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. The pleasure of council, Counselor Wayne?
Deny the application.
The motion to deny, seconded by Counselor Iannoni, any discussion to that? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Hey, Your Worship, I just wanted to say that when the application first came forward, like others around the table, I guess, I thought that, you know, it was a good idea, because in the past, I mean, I don't believe that we're moving the parking from Kaler Road, we're moving the parking from Degade Fort, I mean, we've kind of acted like the provincial government on smoking. We've told people that they can't smoke here and can't smoke there, but never actually did anything to the actual problem. All we did was move it somewhere else. So this application was actually addressing the problem, and when I went out to see Mrs. Galvin, I mean, you know, one thing that she was, I guess, very keen on was the noise. I think everything else, you know, could be worked out, and I know all of the residents, especially the ones that are directly affected, you know, they're very worried about the actual noise, and I think that council as well, you know, kind of bought into that in the sense that, you know, if we can't get a noise attenuation wall, then where are we going? So, you know, Your Worship, I don't know if, I mean, I don't know if the developer wants to actually think about that. I know that that's where the residents are, that's where a lot of council is. I think a lot of council could actually support the application if we knew we had some type of barrier in there that would actually separate the residents and the noise from the establishment. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Anybody else seeking for the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of the denial, which is a yes vote, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Brady. Mr. Clark, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
The public meeting is now being convened to consider proposed amendments to the city's, sorry, to consider proposed amendments to the city's zoning bylaw. To submit a proposed health center, namely a martial arts studio within an existing commercial building at 6182 Dixon Street. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on June 22, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice to be passed to the zoning bylaw amendment, or to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheet outside Councilroom.
At this time, I'd like to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darbison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a neighborhood commercial property, and the application is to add a use that is currently not permitted, one of the permitted uses in the neighborhood commercial zone. Nevertheless, it's a reasonable use, and the staff is supporting it. So we do have a small, two-unit neighborhood plaza on Dixon Street. One of the units is vacant, and another one is occupied by a pet food store. The application proposes to establish, in broad terms, what we call a health center, which, the specific use would be a martial arts studio within one of the units on the site. The lands are sold for neighborhood commercial purposes, and this would be simply adding one use to the list of permitted uses already permitted on that zone. This is the site plan for the proposed property. It's an existing property, it's been there for many, many years. No change in property, allowing the use to fill the vacant unit space. The property is designated for residential purposes. Neighborhood commercial facilities are permitted in residential areas. The small plaza that exists on the property has been there for a considerable period of time. The requested amendment will add an additional use that will utilize a vacant unit in the plaza, no expansion. vacant unit in the plaza. No expansion of building is proposed, nor is the use being intensified. Therefore, no additional parking or servicing is anticipated. Use is intended to service the local community. In terms of zoning, the property is zoned neighborhood commercial. Uh, by requesting a health center to be added to the list of permitted uses, it will permit this particular use, martial arts studio, as well other health and fitness uses. Health centers are permitted in the city's larger commercial areas. However, there's been a recent trend to locate smaller scale health facility, facilities, such as this one in, uh, in neighborhood serving facilities. Proposed, uh, proposed health center will occupy about eleven hundred square, uh, feet, which is well below the, uh, the maximum size in a neighborhood, uh, commercial center, which is about twenty-four hundred square feet. Therefore, the proposed health center will be kept at a small scale appropriate for this end-seeing center. It's our conclusion and recommendation this evening that the proposed applies to the official plan regarding neighborhood, uh, commercial facilities. An existing building and property pretty easily accommodates this particular use and is appropriate for a neighborhood commercial center. By the way, it's recommended as well that, uh, former committee of adjustment approvals for, uh, setbacks and so forth be incorporated in this zoning bylaw as a housekeeping exercise so that the whole of the bylaw could be read, uh, and all the, all the regulations be applicable to this zoning amendment. It's our recommendation this evening that the application be approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darvison. Once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting could result in the OTRM board dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral written submission at this public meeting. Counsel will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this amendment?
My name is Joe Converchini. I live at 6154 Dixon Street. I'm speaking on behalf of the neighbors because they are mostly seniors and do not commute at this time.
Thank you.
Our main concern is, um, when the building was originally designed, uh, the side that is vacant had a house on it. It was a dry cleaner. It ran for many years. Before the house down, expanded the business. Always nice and quiet. Um, we were informed by the pet food, the own, the former tenant, he sold the business now, of the pet food store that they also owned the property behind it. Now, the same way as this property got expanded to the residents, we are afraid that they may want to expand it to the property behind. Uh, there's other businesses, uh, there's apartment building right behind it. Uh, the semi-detached right next door has seniors. Uh, parking is, uh, a problem. There's only six spots or out spots in the back, but it would be very hard for people to be able to get in and out safely. Um, and, uh, our only concern is, is that the fact like somebody's, you know, it's zoned over here today, the next day it goes a little bit further and then a little bit further. So we just wanna make it known, our concerns. We agree, yeah, martial arts studio, as long as it's run Monday to Friday, nine to five, like the existing businesses have over this past thirty years, we're happy. But if they start changing it and go into a daycare because there's rumors that they also may have, uh, that type of a business, we don't know. We're just going on hearsay from the former tenant.
Thank you. Question by Counsel Fisher.
Thank you. Good evening. It's nice to see you. Uh, I also see in your, uh, report that, uh, there are six parking spaces, but a lot of the cars parked on the street.
There, it, like, there's, not as much now, but from both halves of the buildings, they're fully occupied. There were parking spots in front of the semi-detached, in front of the, uh, across the street. In fact, that one time, I believe, five years ago, there was an accident when somebody backed out of the building. They had a car across the street, not seeing that it was parked there. And, uh, like I said, it's very close to residential and Dixon Street, there's only a two, you know, single lane over there.
Do you know if this business will be operating on the, uh, five days a week?
We don't know, but that's why, like, our understanding is that if you don't make any, um, what is that word? Uh, objection to it now, but in the future you would have no rights. So we're just making, reserving our rights in the future.
And are you aware that there was, who were back up from time to time?
Yes. In fact, we just had one on Thursday, and we will be talking to you on that account because about, uh, ten neighborhoods flooded out again. Even neighbors that had their sewer traps changed. The pressure was so great that the sewer, the sanitary sewer in the middle of the road was bubbling up. The water was halfway up our property lines. The new sewer check valves, the plastic ones, the pressure was so great it came past the threads on the tracks in the home.
We can discuss that later, even if, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions to Mr. Converchini? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Having seen none, and at this time, we'll ask the applicant or his representative to come forward, please.
Hey, Mayor, uh, members of council, uh, we had a flood at our place, two words across the street, our office, on, uh, Common Road, sixty-six seventeen. We had about a foot of water in the basement of the wall. That was really quite a storm. This is kind of an interesting application. You know, martial arts, uh, I really don't know very much about it. So I, I sort of took it upon myself to try to find out something about it. So I went to every single martial arts studios in Niagara Falls. Now, three of them were closed, so I didn't, uh, I didn't attend at those ones, but I went to four. And I determined that, this is really quite an interesting thing. People, a lot of kids go there. They call them dragons and cubs and that sort of thing. And, uh, the ones I went to, I was really impressed with the owners. Uh, they have, uh, different, different times in the morning, for example. They have the kids in the afternoon. They have the adults and, uh, towards the evening, they have the adults. And actually, at sixty-seven, sixty-one, sixty-one, Throwstone Road, that's my client operates that, he has an Olympic team, Olympic team. He's working with the Olympics. So this is really a highly sophisticated, uh, organization. They, they, they really, it's something that we should all probably do. Um, as far as, you know, parking is concerned, that's something that the people, I think, are quite right on. The, but the only thing is, these kids are dropped off, and they're, obviously, they're left there, where their parents leave them. And, uh, people come back and they saw that it's happening all day. So it's like a, like a lawyer's office or like a, a doctor's office. People aren't just coming at the same time. Also, this land is zoned neighborhood commercial. This particular property would permit a restaurant or a bar, which really would not necessarily, and there's no time limits on these things. So I think it's a good use of the property. Uh, it's something that really should, probably should have been included in neighborhood commercial. Probably a better use than a restaurant for sure, and a better use for, than some of the other uses. But I think that, uh, what I saw on the, on the floor that I saw, one on Throwstone Road, there's one on, uh, McLeod Road, there's one on, uh, Victoria Avenue, there's one on, uh, Morrison Street. And they're really well organized. They're well run. They're all basically the same. They all have the same format. So I think the, the, the problem that the neighbors are concerned with, this is really a better use than other uses that are in the neighborhood commercial zone. So I strongly support it. My client is very good. He's, uh, uh, he's working with the Olympic people, and, uh, I think he'll do a good job here.
Okay. Is there any questions, uh, of interest in court? Yes, Counselor Maves?
Uh, can you tell us what the hours are gonna be, that, that it's gonna be open?
The hours range, well, they, 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 a little different, but they range from about ten o'clock in the morning, but at night they go to nine, and most of them go to nine o'clock.
Okay. The other thing is too, is, I, I, I get the impression too, a lot of these health clubs, it's almost like music lessons where you drop your son or daughter off and they're gonna do the exercise and they work out.
That's right.
And mom and dad comes and picks them up after their lesson and, you know, karate or whatever they're taking. So I think that's a, that's a good use of that property. Uh, the, uh, the, uh, the area, I know very well, and, uh, I think as far as I'm concerned, and especially talking about health and everything else and exercise, I think this is a great use for this property.
I'm really impressed, I'm really impressed. I'll tell you, I'm really impressed with the kids that I saw operating these things there. Yeah, I was really impressed.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Having seen none, then the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. And, uh, pleasure of counsel.
Move the application.
Moved by Counsel Fisher, seconded by Counsel Diodati. Any discussion? Yes, Counsel Carrion.
Certainly, I think it's a good use for the property as well, your worship. I just find it interesting that they would call it a health center. I used to belong to one, and every time I went there, I just got hurt. And the only noise that came from it was when the other people were hitting me.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Any further discussion, having seen none, and all those in favor? Motion is carried, Counsel. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
The public meeting is now being convened to consider proposed amendments to the city's zoning bylaw, official plan, and the requirements of imperial regulations regarding the 2007 minimum distance separation formula and planning document updates. Notice was given in accordance with the regulations by publishing a notice in the Niagara Falls review on Saturday, June 23rd, 2007, and by prepaid first-class mail on Friday, June 22nd, 2007, to certain persons and agencies. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process applicable, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside council chamber.
And once again, I'm gonna ask the director of planning to introduce the, or explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. So, Mr. Darvison.
Thank you, members, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a city-initiated amendment, and it's to incorporate within our planning documents, uh, updated requirements about the provincial government. Uh, the missed files are required to comply with provincial RND's policies, which include compliance with the minimum distance separation formula. The MDS formula provides for a minimum setback between a livestock operation and dwelling units to minimize complaints regarding odor. Amendments are needed to the city's official plan and zoning bylaw to incorporate the updated, uh, MDS formula. There are MDS policies currently in the city's official plan and zoning bylaws, seventy-nine to a hundred. Uh, other bylaws that apply to Willoughby, Colon, and Humbersone do not include these features at this time. Uh, the MDS were, uh, are updated, uh, by the provincial government, 2006, and updating of the official plan and zoning bylaw, uh, are required now. Uh, the MDS are applied at the term of building permits for new livestock operations and/or new dwelling units in the agricultural area. And again, the purpose is to ensure that there's a minimum distance between these, uh, protecting uses for the, for the, uh, for distance, uh, for, um, for noxious odors. The new MDS formulas are simpler and easier to calculate municipal staff, and the MDS review will eventually be transferred from the region to the city through the recent memorandum of understanding of climbing functions across the region. So the official plan, uh, amendment is needed to delete, uh, the records is currently in the official plan for the old formula under the agricultural protocol practice and incorporate new policies under the revised MDS as issued by the minister, uh, by the provincial government. The zoning is intended to update the MDS within the zoning bylaw, seventy-nine to a hundred, and also introduce the same kinds of regulations in our Colon, Willoughby, and Humbersone bylaws. Uh, the zoning amendments will apply to the MDS, uh, to new dwellings on existing lots of record. This is no change from the current, uh, guidelines. Allow the reconstruction of existing livestock facilities or dwellings destroyed by a natural catastrophe after original rotations. Recognize non-active cemeteries in the agricultural areas as low intensity uses for the purpose of calculating the MDS, and the MDS will not apply to, uh, land uses within the urban area boundary. It's our recommendation this evening that the official plan amendment be adopted, and the zoning amendments for, uh, the four zones be, uh, be updated to include the new formulas, and that council for the official plan amendments of the region for their ultimate approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darvison. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting could result in the OTRM board dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral written submission at this public meeting. Is there anyone here tonight who has an interest in this matter in the gallery? Is anyone here that has an interest this evening on this matter? Okay, having seen none, and members of council, do you have any questions of the planner in respect to this matter? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, through you to Mr. Darvison. Um, I know we're, uh, this is a rural farming area. It can be an agricultural area. And I'm wondering, uh, we're always worried about making sure the residential houses are, uh, a safe distance and, uh, for owners and complaints with respect to agricultural operations. Um, through my experience for thirty years with the health department, uh, people want to go out into the rural area and build a house, and after you're there for, uh, six weeks, they wanna start complaining about the, uh, agricultural uses around them. Is there anything that can be done to put in this bylaw that when somebody, uh, builds in a agricultural area, a residential, uh, dwelling, that, uh, they, uh, can sign something on title or whatever that, uh, indicates that they're aware they're dealing, uh, with building in an agricultural area, and, uh, they, uh, do not have the option of, uh, complaints with respect, respect to agricultural uses adjacent to their property, rather than putting on the onus on the, uh, on the, uh, agricultural people and the farming people? Uh, I've just seen it too many times, and, uh, I know we've done it in other areas where we've had, uh, a use that, uh, maybe was, um, not compatible with a, a residential area, and the people, when you put a subdivision there, they sign that they're aware of that, uh, that, uh, use and the residents, uh, are protected, uh, from, uh, complaints, and so, and also so is the municipality.
Mr. Darvison?
Okay, yes, uh, Mr., uh, Counselor Thompson's, uh, observation is correct. In a, in an urban area, when you have a subdivision, you can impose things on, on title, and we typically do that for railway noises and those kinds of things. What we're talking about here is not any subdivision development, unfortunately, in the rural area. At best, we might receive a consent application for a single lot. And, uh, in terms of building permits, the location of that house on that lot really is a, is a matter of something getting, coming in and getting building permits, ensuring that all the rules are, are abided by. And this particular one, it simply is a distance separation formula to locate that house. So I don't know, uh, Counselor Thompson, that there's any real mechanisms to, unless the, the owner or the creator of the lot puts something on title, uh, like a warning file, it's warning to people that, yes, indeed, this is an agricultural area and there are sub, you will be subject to nuisances. There's really no mechanism that I know of because it's not a subdivision. It's just a consent application.
Counselor Thompson, something that the provincial government has done to address these sorts of problems is enacted the Farm Practices Act, which restrains, uh, the application of bylaws like zoning bylaws in the case of, uh, farm practices that are regular farm practices. And, uh, I've been involved in a couple of situations with complaints of that type, and the, uh, the processes involved are very much in favor of the farmers in those instances. If the person wants to continue with their complaint in order to convince, to get the municipality permission to apply the bylaw, he has to go to a panel which is, consists of farmers, and convince that panel that the practice he complains of is not a standard farm practice and within the realm of the usual things farmers do, like go and harvest their crops at five in the morning so they can get them done that day, that sort of thing. Um, so there is a, there is a provincial procedure in place which does address your concerns.
Counselor Carrion.
Thank you, your worship. There were no details in the report on how much we're changing it. Can we get an idea on what the distances are? Like, we're talking about a ten percent change, twenty percent change?
Okay. Do you have any questions, Mr. Darvison?
That is a tough question. Um, I, I'm not familiar specifically with the current formulas, the actual distances. They do vary upon the intensity of the livestock operation, however. If you have a very intense farming operation, the distance is greater. If it's a less intense one, the distance is less. And again, I, I would have to report back on the actual variance between the two sets of guidelines.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Darvison? Okay, having seen none, then we'll close the, uh, public meeting. The public meeting with respect to the proposed official plan amendment, uh, plan and zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Uh, pleasure of counsel. Moved back to Counsel Iannoli, seconded by Counsel Maves. Uh, any discussion to the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion, if you want to oppose? Okay, motion is carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
The purpose of the next public meeting is for a draft plan of condominium to allow the public to receive information and to comment, comment on a proposed plan of condominium, which is to convert an existing thirty-one inch rental apartment complex to condominium ownership. It's located on the west side of Dorchester Road, South Patten Road. Notice was given by first-class mail on July 11th, 2007, to all tenants of the building as a courtesy.
Okay, um, the applicant will provide an overview, uh, of the draft plan of subdivision at this time, and, uh, counsel will hear from any person wishing to comment on the plan. Who's coming forward? The applicant? The applicant?
Members of council, this is a building that's forty-five years of age, sits on Dorchester Road. I think you all know it. It's an area that's very well established, and what my client is doing, I read the report here, I think you probably have read it as well, and I, of course, agree with it. Only one aspect that I disagree with, this building is forty-five years old, it's more than six units, so that the landlord here is paying probably almost double what an average person would pay, because the apartments over six units are taxed at a higher rate, as you probably all know, at a residential rate. So, at forty-five years, the, the building's been very highly taxed. Also, it's a very established area, and the only thing I disagree with in the report is the request, it's only a request that five percent be paid for park purposes. I think it's kind of unfair in view of the fact that the building is forty-five years of age, that we've been paying all these high taxes over these years, and I agree that five percent is necessary and is well-earned when you get a brand-new subdivision where, where things are brand-new and something should be done. But this is an established area, I'd request that that particular, I'd request that we do not, you not request it, that sort of thing. They're requesting it, but we're saying, well, we request that you don't include that in the condition. Other than that, it's a pretty straightforward application. As you know, there's a large vacancy factor in Niagara Falls right now. It's about a five to six percent vacancy factor, and it's something that, this will provide moderate housing for people, and the prices will be about seventy-five to ninety-thousand dollars, which is very reasonable, give people a chance to, to buy these properties, and will certainly give the tenants the right to buy. The tenants will all notify, of course. That's all I can really say basically about it. I think it's a good application. While certainly work with the city, we've got to change the site plan somewhat, we'll do that.
Okay, we'll have some questions from members of council. Counselor Iannoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Sinclair. If they're not making, or maybe, that's wrong, maybe through you to staff, if they're not adding any more footstays and they're just taking apartments to condominiums, why are we asking for the five percent park in lieu?
Perhaps you can ask that question.
I did. To staff, whoever would ask?
Yes, yes, that question is, is usually when you have a plan of subdivision under planning act, you can receive a five percent when you give approval to a plan of subdivision. An apartment building does not go through a subdivision procedure. However, we're now going through a condominium procedure, which is the same as a plan of subdivision. So, the only authority or the only time that you can actually get your five percent is when you go for a subdivision plan or a condominium plan. Otherwise, this apartment building is, has been developed, and no contribution has been given because it's not in a registered plan. It was probably a free-spend development at the time, and no, there was no act at the time that required that five percent contribution. And that's, that's your answer. So, the city applies, we apply the five percent contribution whenever there's a plan of subdivision or whenever there's a condominium, and this is a condominium conversion, so you have the right to ask for five percent.
Thank you, Mr. Darbison. Are there any further questions of council? Yes, Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, just to that point, Your Worship, I always perceive the Parkland dedication to be the creation of new lots or the inclusion of, I guess, more people into an area. This apartment building already has, I think it said, two bachelor apartments, two one-bedrooms, and twenty-six two-bedroom apartments. There's already people living in the apartment building. I almost don't understand the rationale. It's not like there's new people moving into the area and we're actually going to be developing a park. There's already people living there, so I just want to know what's that rationale?
Mr. Darbison, you want to tackle it?
Same answer as before. It's, it's an application under planning act, it's a plan of condominium, and you are entitled to receive your five percent now because it wasn't paid in the future, in the past. If, if this apartment building was a block and a subdivision in the past, forty-five years ago, you would have received your five percent contribution then, but you didn't.
Mr. McDonald wants to make a comment as well, it's you.
Just a comment, I think, I was going to go, it's not any different than the discussion we often have with developers regarding paying development charges, because occasionally development takes place in an area where all these services are in place. We still ask the development charge, it's part of the planning act, we're entitled to receive it, and it really goes to the overall contributions. People are very clear points of grand development, but we have this discussion a lot with development charges, so it's very similar.
Okay. Any questions from members of council? Counselor Maves?
Just like to know what the five percent means in actual dollar value, can we come up with something like?
Uh, Mr. Darbison, do you have a figure?
No idea.
Okay. I presume that we'll give you an appraisal done, and then...
Would Mr. Sinclair know that answer?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Sinclair?
It's five percent of the value, the gross value of the land, it's not the building, anyway, at least we escaped the building. But I imagine it'd be fairly substantial, because the, it's a pretty big lot, and it's probably appraised at around three or four hundred thousand, I would think. So, it's a major, major, you know, it's a major expense to my client. I just think that, and I agree with Mr. D'Angelo, the rationale, like, when you have a new, a new subdivision going in, or a new building, I can see taking the five percent, because fresh, you've got to get the, you've got to do all the things you have to do out of your development charges, but this building's been there for over forty-five years, and we've been paying, oh, geez, we've paid a lot of taxes. I just think it's maybe just unfair. It's a request of the city. The city didn't say they, sort of, you must have it, they say it's a request. So, we're just making a request to go the other way, that you don't charge it in this particular case.
With Mr. Sinclair, I would ask the Director of Parks and Rec to address that as well. Ms. Morrissey?
Through You Worship, just to follow up as well, a part of the Parkland dedication is not always for new development in terms of us, it's to reinvest in infrastructure of community. There's many new things in communities as they, as they grow, as they evolve, playgrounds, replacements, so from park recreation and culture's perspective, while it's a recommendation that we're suggesting, and we do welcome that community investment, as Mr. Darbison has pointed out, this prior development wasn't conditional upon a contribution, and that's why we've made this suggestion strongly. And as everybody knows, we're going through many redecorations in our community, and having the source of revenue to support green space and park amenities as they evolve is something that we think is very important.
Thank you. At this time, then, members of council, I'm going to invite anyone wishing to comment on the plan to come forward as well. Those speaking are asked to give their name and address before offering comments, as required by the planning act. Be advised that failure to make an oral submission at the public meeting or a written submission prior to council approving or refusing the plan may result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any appeal that you may file against the decision of council. Is there anyone in the gallery who wishes to make a presentation with respect to this matter? Is there anyone in the gallery? Okay. And having seen none, the public meeting for the draft plan of subdivision is now concluded. I have a motion to refer the comments received at this meeting today to staff for the review and the draft plan. Counselor Thompson, so move second, I'm sorry. Counselor, I'm sorry, Mr. Darbison?
Through, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, the, actually, the recommendations are before you in the report.
Okay, so we do have one, four recommendations?
Yes.
To move the recommendation, I'm sure I've stand corrected. So, we have a motion to, that the plan of condominium be draft approved, subject to the conditions in the attached appendix, that the mayor designate be authorized to sign the draft, the draft plan as approved, twenty days after notice of council decision has been given as required by the planning act, provided that no appeals of the decision have been lodged, and a draft approval be given for three years, after which approval will lapse unless an extension is requested by the developer and granted by council, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the condominium agreement and any required documents to allow for the future registration of the condominium when all matters are addressed to the satisfaction of the city solicitor. That will move it for that. Counselor Thompson and Counselor Idead Addy. Any discussion? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually very pleased to move this. I'm very familiar with the property. It's well-maintained, there's a substantial piece of property associated with it, and almost a park-like setting in the front of it. But the nice part about it is the opportunity for pride of ownership with the properties here, seventy-five thousand to ninety thousand, give the opportunity to some people on fixed incomes and minimal incomes to have the pride of ownership and have their own properties. And so, I'm pleased to move that. And the other question that hasn't been answered, does the council have the flex through you, Mr. Mayor, the flexibility to make a decision with respect to the five percent?
Uh, Mr. Darbison, can you answer that question, or is it, it says this question?
I can refer this matter of discretion to our legal...
Mr. Beeman?
Yes, the council would have the discretion to waive five percent in the circumstance. You do have the right to waive it if you wish.
Okay. Counselor Maves?
My question is, can you compromise on the five percent? Can you make it two and a half or something like that?
Uh, Mr. Beeman?
Glad, glad, yeah. A little more difficult, sir, the, it's kind of an all or nothing proposition, so it's, it's holding in the eyes.
Okay. We do have a motion before us, then. We'll deal with the motion on the floor. All those in favor? Motion is carried, Nancy. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is miscellaneous planning matters. We have PD 2007-59, matters arising from the Municipal Heritage Committee, and we have a recommendation that council consider listing lands located on the east side of Fallsview Boulevard and the south of Marriott Hotel under the city's municipal register of heritage properties. Also, that council authorize staff to investigate the cost of hiring a consultant or qualified expert to undertake a detailed investigation of these lands to evaluate their level of heritage significance and/or value, if appropriate, a method of conservation. Also, that council not consider any alteration, modification, or removal of the existing pedestrian deck agreement untitled to the subject property until such time as report is received from a consultant hired to evaluate the level of heritage significance and/or value of the property. That council approve a request to replace the roof over the porch at the back door of the Lundy's Lane Historical Museum as designated property with a similar style of roof, including gutters and downspokes, as the present roof allows water to fall onto the steps below, causing safety and maintenance concern. So, we have that in the recommendation. Any discussion? Counselor Wing? Counselor Wing moves the recommendation? Counselor Iannoni?
You're moving one to four. Yes. And I'm going to speak for against one, two, and three.
We'd like to separate them, members of council, let's do that. Let's have items one, two, and three be dealt with first. We have a recommendation.
We'll deal with four.
Okay, you can deal with four, then. We'll deal with item number four, the last item I mentioned. We'll have a motion to approve that. Is your motion, motion by Counselor, who make it? Counselor Wing, second by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any discussion to that? Counselor Carrier?
I'll vote on that one, I don't have a conflict with that.
Yes, that's fair. Okay. So, we'll deal with that. Any other comments? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Now, those who have conflicts on this matter, by Counselor Carrier or Counselor Thompson, is that correct? Counselor Iannoni?
Thank you. I understand we have a couple speakers, and I'd like to hear them before we speak.
That's fair. Okay, we'll do that. Okay, so, is there anyone who would like to make a presentation this evening, if you have that? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors, staff, ladies and gentlemen. As you're aware, I act as solicitor for the registered owners of the subject lands and air rights being Niagara Twenty-First Grouping, its affiliate Seven Oh Nine Oh Two One Ontario Limited, and Two One Zero Zero Four Two Two Ontario Limited, which holds the land and air rights in trust for another numbered company, Two Zero Nine Five Five Two Seven Ontario Limited. My clients and I have reviewed the staff reports submitted with respect to this matter and disagree with the recommendations one through three, inclusive on tonight's staff report. Given that recommendation number four did not affect my client's lands or air rights, we offer no comments with respect to same. On June 11, 2007, I submitted a letter setting out my client's position with respect to Ms. Seko's petition to have these lands and air rights designated pursuant to the Ontario Heritage Act. I do not believe that you have been provided with a copy of my letter, and I'm not certain if the Municipal Heritage Committee was provided with a copy of same either. I will therefore distribute a copy of this, of this letter to you at this time. I would also like to distribute partial copies of a survey dated July 18, 2001, showing the location of the lands and air rights owned by Niagara Twenty-First Grouping and its affiliate, and partial copies of the reference, of the reference plan indicating the location of the lands and air rights owned by the other companies. Please note that the lands and air rights were severed in the spring of last year. The lands shaded blue are owned by Seven Oh Nine Oh Two One Ontario Limited, and are not included in the description of the lands that form part of the pedestrian deck agreement to which Ms. Seko refers. The lands shaded pink are part of the lands owned by Niagara Twenty-First Group, where the Niagara Falls Marriott Fallsview Hotel and Spa is located. The air rights shaded yellow are part of the air rights owned by Niagara Twenty-First Grouping. The lands shaded orange are owned by the numbered company, Two One Zero Zero Four Two Two, and the air rights shaded green are all owned by that same company. The subject matter of Ms. Seko's petition has been studied at great length and for numerous years by city council, city staff, the Niagara Parks Commission, and other stakeholders in the area. In fact, my client, Niagara Twenty-First Group, formerly known as the Ritz Motel Limited at the time, submitted an application to rezone and amend the official plan designation with respect to the air rights in December of 2000. This application led to the retaining of Kirkland Partnership Inc. to see how it could fit in as, as what is prospect point, or the piazzetta, as Mr. Kirkland familiarly referred to saying, which connect with the lands owned by the Niagara Parks Commission. This study here involved comments from other affected stakeholders, such as Ramzat LTD and the Niagara Parks Commission. Many meetings were held with respect to this study. However, the application has not moved forward since the year 2000, as my clients have held it in abeyance out of deference to the city pending the final determination of the fate of the people mover system in Grand Boulevard. However, at no time from December of 2000 to early this year did Ms. Seko have anything to offer with respect to the air rights, our client's lands, or the pedestrian deck agreement, requiring Ms. Seko's interest in my client's lands and air rights as they are private lands and not publicly owned. I do not wish to go in great length at this time as to why my clients strongly oppose the designation of their lands, as we do not believe that this is the actual public meeting established for this purpose, but we find it important to highlight to you some of the comments raised in my letter dated June 11. The subject lands are mainly located on a sloped incline. It is neither safe nor desired that residents and visitors trespass and enter the properties to view the falls. The subject air rights are located further east from these, from these lands, over the lands purchased by the city from the railway. The view to which Ms. Seko refers is seen from a public sidewalk located on lands owned by the city of Niagara Falls, and until very recently, this view was obstructed by trees, bush, and natural landscaping located on my client's lands, which were removed by a trespasser competitor, competitor hotel without my client's consent. The pedestrian deck to which Ms. Seko refers is a sidewalk owned by the city of Niagara Falls and not the subject of the private agreement between my clients and the city. You will see the existing city sidewalk on the survey that I have distributed to you, just above the, the blue and, I believe, the link. Given that the discussions with city staff, the Niagara Parks Commission, and the other stakeholders have been paused because the rezoning and official plan amendment application is still being held in abeyance, my client's pedestrian deck has never been constructed. The most compelling reason for Ms. Seko's request that the subject lands and air rights be designated heritage is that, quote, "Together, the properties form the last existing publicly accessible observation point from which residents and visitors alike can enjoy, free of charge, a panoramic, panoramic view of the world-famous natural wonder Niagara Falls from the historic district known as Falls View," unquote. Ms. Seko is bravely mistaken. There are many publicly accessible observation points offering spectacular views of the falls, free of charge, which are located on lands which form part of the Niagara Falls Casino Resort by way of an expansive pedestrian promenade available to all. Other private lands also offering views are the Loretto lands and the Malcarmal lands. On October 14, 2005, at a special council meeting, city council had an opportunity to consider giving notice of intention to designate... to consider giving notice of intention to designate the building and property located at 6881 Stanley Avenue, more commonly known as the Loretto lands. The motion for consideration was denied, even though the building and property had been identified as having heritage significance to the community because of its architecture, history, and association with the cultural religious community of Niagara Falls and its setting in the, in the city's landscape. This is a very significant precedent set by city council. Why should my client's lands and air rights be, be treated any differently than the Loretto lands were? Requer why Ms. Seko and Romzap LTD had no comments to offer at that special meeting. The designation of my client's lands and air rights does not serve my client's potential future development interest in plans. However, most importantly, the designation of my client's lands and air rights does not serve the city's best interests. My clients have been more than patient for seven years, awaiting to hear the fate of the people mover system and the Grand Boulevard. My clients have been most anxious to cooperate with the establishment of same in conjunction with their future development of their lands. However, they still wait. With respect to each of the three recommendations contained in tonight's staff report, we comment as follows. My, my clients strongly oppose that counsel consider listing our client's lands and air rights under the city's municipal register of heritage properties for those reasons I just mentioned. City council established an important precedent when it chose not to designate the Loretto lands, which offered a much greater historical and architectural significance to the area. Again, why should these lands and air rights be treated differently than the Loretto lands were? Two, it is inappropriate for counsel to authorize staff to engage the costly services of a consultant to investigate the heritage significance of private lands. To our knowledge, the city has never funded the cause of such consultant for this type of purpose, and it was certainly not done with respect to the Loretto lands. This could be a very dangerous precedent that you may set. Why should public funds be utilized to fund Ms. Seko's petition? As our clients do not believe that a consultant should be retained at all, our clients have no interest in funding this matter either. What purpose would this study serve when this type of study was not conducted for the Loretto lands? Finally, given that my client strongly opposed the retaining of a consultant with respect to this matter, the issue pertaining to the current pedestrian deck agreement should be left alone unless and until my clients, both of them individually, raise their request forward to city council. My clients therefore respectfully request that you deny recommendations one through three, inclusive listed on tonight's agenda. Staff report.
Thank you very much. Any questions, uh? Yes. Before I head, we'll have a chance to speak, but any questions for Ms. Gilberti? Members of council? Thank you very much, Ms. Gilberti. Ms. Seko, would you like to come forward, please?
Mayor, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, I was not expecting to, um, address this subject this evening, but if I could, um, just a few points. The pedestrian deck has nothing to do with Loretto or Mount Carmel. The pedestrian deck has nothing to do with Loretto or Mount Carmel. Please repeat that to yourself a third time. This is not an issue between titans. This is an issue about doing what is best for the residents and the 14 million tourists that come to Niagara Falls. I did not bring this forward to council to bring two major corporations into a fight. I'm doing this for what I believe is the benefit of Niagara Falls, 14 million visitors to the city that sustain our livelihoods. I believe, and I have to thank Ms. Gilberti for proving as to why it is important to get a consultant hired on this. This last minute information that contradicts everything that I did, and I am not a professional, I did not present myself as a professional, I did the research that was possible within my means. We have now been presented with contradictory information from a lawyer, which has access to information that I do not have. This requires a third party consultant. I ask that you approve the hiring of a consultant for the benefit of the residents of Niagara Falls, the 14 million tourists that sustain our livelihood, and to remove this from the arena of a titan fight and to where it should be. Thank you.
Any questions of Ms. Seko? Yes, Counselor Anoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No questions, just a comment. Um, I read Ms. Seko's letter, and I read, listened to Ms. Gilberti, and I say, I strongly disagree with you. This is a fight amongst titans, and that's all this is. When we are lobbied by Romzap, which we were, in order to preserve the view from the Fallsview Hotels, which you're not privy to because the phone calls came to us, this makes this, to me, a clash of the titans, as, so to speak. To me, this is simple, and it is what it is. The Sheridan Fallsview does not want their Fallsview rooms obstructed by a potential hotel in front of it. And I don't see, and, and we'll agree to disagree, that's how I see this, and I don't see it as anything different. I have a number of questions, but I would like to ask staff, if the city designates this land, or gives it, or asks a consultant to bring it back for consideration of designation, Alderman Mayne is going to correct me, um, does that include the railway land that sits below it? Because I'm curious about that.
Ms. Gilbertson, can you answer that question?
Let me answer the question this way. The study, uh, the request was made for a specific piece of property. The report that we prepared for the Municipal Heritage Committee was, it may not, not just be that little piece of property, it may be an expanded area. I mean, what, how did we do, actually define this cultural heritage landscape? It may be a little bit bigger than simply focusing on this property. So it could very well include the railway property, it could include adjacent lands as well.
Yes, you do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then I will thank Ms. Seko for bringing it up in her letter, and that is concerning, uh, the fixture of people mover, and the, and the proposed Grand Boulevard. I would say to you that when we sold, bought the railway lands, I remember you were a huge opponent of it at the time, um, there were members of council of the day, who aren't here any longer, who made promises that said, when we buy this land, we're going to sell this land back, and we're going to be able to recoup it and bring the monies back into the coffers of the cities. I went back and reread my articles today, just to kind of get a chuckle. Um, I will say that I believe that the people mover is dead, we just haven't had a funeral yet. And I would say that I would hate to see us limit that land, because I believe if the city rezones that land, and I've been waiting forever and a day, I mean, I remember we had the promises seven years ago, if we rezone that land and sell that land back to commercial owners, whether they kill each other to the death, bidding for the highest bid for that railway land, I would say I'd like to see us put those millions of dollars back into the city coffers and having a ability to recoup those monies. We just had a report downstairs that told us we'd have to look at Lexington Court and look at $5.5 million worth of improvements. And I'll say this council is struggling to find revenue generators that are not taxpayer motivated or come out of the property taxes of the residents, and I think this is a way that we have it. I've been waiting forever and a day to see us be able to do that, and I'd hate to see that be designated and potentially affect the land that we could sell that.
Well, counsel, there's a few things, a few assumptions that are incorrect. The people.
No, I didn't, no, I didn't make assumptions. I gave you my opinion, but I didn't make assumptions.
I want to qualify that, your opinion, because.
Well, you do all the time, so don't worry.
I've not reported that yet, so you'll, you'll have a chance to get that in the future yet. Uh, any other questions? Counselor Wing?
Yes, we're not talking about a request for designation here. We're talking about a recommendation from the Municipal Heritage Committee that counsel consider listing the lands under the city's municipal register of heritage properties. And there is a big thick booklet which this council approved earlier this year, it's the listing. Uh, and I believe the Loretto lands are listed there as well. Listing is not the same thing as designation by any means, uh, totally different. Um, just to address the concern of Ms. Gilberti's about consultant being engaged to study private lands, uh, last year, council engaged a consultant to study cultural heritage landscapes in general, which are private lands. We'll have that study wrapping up and coming to us shortly. Uh, and this is a cultural heritage, uh, landscape. And, you know, just tonight, you can see how complicated this issue is, which I believe is one of the reasons that, uh, planning staff have recommended the very third party consultant Ms. Seko has suggested we need. And preliminary review by planning staff indicates there are sufficient values associated with the subject area to suggest that a further heritage assessment should be conducted. And the report that, uh, Mr. Darvison, uh, referenced, uh, which came to the Municipal Heritage Committee, said, "A detailed, uh, detailed heritage assessment is needed to examine the significance of these lands, either alone or as part of a larger area or as a, as a cultural heritage landscape. The assessment should also determine what, if any, areas should be preserved, and what areas could accommodate future development, and the form of that development." And, you know, the suggestion is that, so because of the scale and importance of this assessment, it shouldn't be city staff doing it, a consultant should be hired. So this isn't just about the little sections that were outlined in the handout, it's about the wider area of, you know, the parts of Fallsview that should include the Rotor, which are still visible from, you know, where you can still see the panoramic view, the upper river, the lower river, Goat Island, all the US side from up above. And, you know, it's, it just makes sense. List it, it doesn't, the same as designation, it doesn't give it any kind of protection, but list it so it's red flag in the meantime of being of some interest, and that's all that means. The listing says it's of some interest. Authorize staff to hire consultants. We've already got one underway looking at cultural heritage landscapes in a general sense. This is one looking at a very important area of our city in a little more specific sense, and just, you know, don't alter, modify, or remove the existing agreement until we get a report back and we know exactly what can and should be developed and what should be protected. You know, it's, this is really that we're getting more information.
Counselor Fisher?
Thank you. On that, we're just court one, two, or three, because I feel these people own the land, they did not request for us to look at it in any way, shape, or form. This request came from an outsider, so I cannot support this. I believe if you own property, you want it designated, or you want it looked at, then you should make the request, not someone else.
Counselor Mays?
I'm not sure who can answer this question, Your Worship, uh, but isn't, isn't, wasn't there some bylaws in years gone by as to how high, of course, we could, uh, if they're going to build on this property, how high it could go? Wasn't there something in the bylaws from previous years? Someone answer that?
Mr. Darvison, can you answer that question first, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we have an official plan that actually, uh, talks about height regions in our tourist partial area, and, uh, uh, I don't recall specifically about this particular property, but there's also a schedule that talks about open space features too, and I know a portion of this property is shown as an open space feature. So we do have some guidelines about height zones, and we do have some guidelines about open space features, and, uh, I know the latter, uh.
Those were all set down in my bylaw, were they not?
Well, official plan, they are in your official plan, yes.
The other thing is too, I, I, I really do believe too that the owners of the property should be coming forward and if they wanted to have this designation, perhaps they should have been asking for it as well.
Thank you. Ms. Seko, I'd just like you to make another comment, but, uh, do you have a question or is it?
I can answer Counselor Mays' question. I believe there are restrictive covenants on the land which does not allow anything to be built higher than the height of a sidewalk.
Counselor Anoni?
Thank you. There was not an application before us to lift the restrictive covenant, so I think that's premature, so I'd like to make a motion that counsel deny one, two, and three.
We have a motion to deny one, two, and three by, moved by Counselor Anoni, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any discussion? Counselor Wing?
Uh, yes, just a reminder to council that, uh, one of the things that, uh, can be protected under the Ontario Heritage Act is viewscape. And viewscape are something where between the viewing point and the object of viewing, sometimes private property comes in between them, but we're talking about a viewscape from publicly owned lands out to the USA, the falls, and everything in between, and yes, there's private land in the way, but this isn't about private land, this is about protecting a viewscape, which is done under the Ontario Heritage Act. And, you know, we just adopted a heritage master plan last year which recommended we start protecting cultural heritage landscapes. This certainly is one of those. So, well, we, we do have a report adopted, master plan in place, which says we should be protecting these sort of things. So, you know, this isn't a make or break decision tonight, this is getting more information to make a more informed decision.
Okay, any comments? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, Your Worship. You know, just on the point of adopting, uh, I guess, our cultural and heritage master plan, I mean, you know, we've never actually been asked to look at the properties that surround the, uh, the battlefield on, on Lundy's Lane, which in my opinion would be one of the most historical pieces of property that we have in the city. Every single time we've been dealing with one of these applications, the owner of the property has been telling us, "Please, don't do this, don't designate our property." And I don't understand why we continue to get ourselves into this mess. I mean, it's not like we can take a commercial piece of property, Your Worship, and rezonate to residential or change its designation, yet we can put a historical designation on a piece of property. I really don't find that to be too fair to the property owner. So, Your Worship, I mean, more than anything, I don't agree with the actual process of these. I don't agree that we can change the designation of someone's property after they bought that property in good faith. So I'll go with the motion as well, Your Worship.
All right, any other comments? So we have a motion to deny the recommendation. All those in favor? Please raise your hands, one, two, three, four, five, opposed. We have one. The motion is carried. Thank you very much. And the council, the next item on the agenda is a, uh, an application for our compliance audit. If counsel consider the request for a compliance audit of the 2006 municipal election campaign finances of Wayne Thompson, and based on the fact that the violation has been rectified, that counsel reject the compliance audit request. Anyone wishing to make comment?
Move the recommendation?
Okay, moved by Counselor Anoni. Seconded, move the motion. Counselor Mays? That's your only second to comment? Okay, thank you.
Are we going to hear? Yeah, I'm trying to play it. I, 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 uh, am opposed to, uh, this, this donation thing, and is it a provincial law that prohibits us from accepting, uh, out of country donations? Someone answer that question?
Yes, sir, it is a provincial law.
A provincial law, there's nothing we can do about it.
No, sir.
Now, the reason I bring that up is, uh, I have about 40 relatives in the States, and, uh, just one of my nephews or brother or sister wants to donate to my campaign, I guess in future I have to reject that. And thank you.
Any comments? Counselor Wing?
I would think that, uh, all candidates might be a little more careful with their campaign finances if they were posted online. Uh, you know, it's a trend throughout Ontario, more and more municipalities all the time are posting the statements online so that anybody can examine them without having to, you know, have to work during the day, take time off work to go down to the court's office. I know Toronto's gone that way, Mississauga, Oakville, so, uh, once we deal with this, I would like to make a motion that we, from now on, post campaign finance statements online, and hopefully that'll be a little incentive for everybody to be more careful with their finances.
Just speaking to the motion. Anybody else? It's not a call of motion. All those in favor? If you raise your hands again, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Motion is carried. Thank you. All right, Counselor Wing?
Yeah, and I move that, uh, visit, the 2006 election campaign finance statements and all future election campaign finance statements be posted on the city's website so the public can feel the more easily.
Okay, Counselor Anoni, second. Any discussion? Counselor Anoni?
We attempted this once before, and it got, it got shot down, and I hope that this did, you know, we've put together a, a compliance audit committee, we just voted on another compliance audit request, put it online, let people go on and read it themselves. None of us have anything to hide, that's why we submit our, our finances.
That's right. Any comments? Okay, all those in favor? Please raise your hands. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. And the council, I'd like to begin this evening by offering my condolences to Mrs. Ray Irfita and her son Dean Irfita, a Niagara Falls city clerk on the passing of his father and husband, actually Dean or, uh, Mr. Sam Irfita. Uh, Sam will be sadly missed by many at city hall, as you know, he was a valued employee for over 35 years, and he retired in 1999. Also to Linda Kane Crocco of the Clerk's Department on the passing of her stepmother, Betty Kane, and to Mochiano Chieca of the, of our Building Department, on his condolences, of course, to him on the passing of his father, Michael Chieca. And to Regional Counselor Norm Paddock on the passing of his brother, Mr. John Walter Reed. Heartfelt thanks and thoughts to, of members of council, uh, to the city, uh, with each of you and your families as you mourn the loss of your loved ones. I offer congratulations on a more positive note to our CIO, Mr. John McDonald, on the birth of his first grandchild. John's son Scott and his wife Jamie are proud new parents of a baby girl. We offer our heartfelt best wishes on the new addition to your family. Congratulations, sir. Moving on to city business, Go Transit at the region, I'd like to provide an update to the residents and members of council on the status of the initiative to bring Go Transit to Niagara. As you may know, Go Transit administrators were asked to attend a regional council meeting on July 17th, and though Go sent a letter with their regrets stating that they could not attend on that date, regional councils remain positive and continue to be diligent in their efforts to keep Go on the agenda. A motion was made by Counselor Timms and seconded by myself that council send correspondents to Go Transit, inviting them to attend at a future meeting, and noting that the extending of the Go service to Niagara is consistent with the Green Belt and places to grow provincial strategies. Councilors of the region are very. Councils of the region are very optimistic, especially given the correspondence received by Go Transit that concludes with the following line. At Go, we look at the Niagara region as a near future market. It is not a question of if we'll serve it, it is a question of when we'll serve it. With a positive statement like this and writing from Go Transit, it is a priority for members of council at the region, and I know here as well, to build on this momentum and to keep this initiative at the fore of our residents. I've asked staff to arrange a meeting with Provincial Transportation Minister Donna Kansfield at the upcoming AMO conference in August. At that time, invite members of our city council to join me in order to continue to pursue this important advancement in transportation for the residents of Niagara Falls as well as the entire region. Also, Great Lakes-St. Lawrence City's initiative resolution during the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence City's Mayor's Conference on July 11th and 12th, I am pleased to report that political leaders in twenty-eight cities committed to a goal of fifteen percent reduction in water consumption by 2015. As the world's largest source of fresh water, the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence River are essential to the continued vitality of cities, townships, and villages along their shores. The Great Lakes and St. Lawrence River represent nearly twenty percent of the world's surface fresh water supply and provide drinking water for more than forty million North Americans. I am proud of the commitment by Great Lakes Mayor's, Great Lakes City Mayor's, and I look forward to, to help to continue to advance to the protection and restoration of the Great Lakes and the St. Lawrence River. So I'd like to ask, if I may, for a motion that we accept, that we actually direct staff to accept the challenge and look at the implication on how we can achieve the fifteen percent reduction in water consumption by the year 2015. Seconded by, actually, as you move by Counsel Wayne, seconded by Counsel Carrio. Any discussion to that? All of whom favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. And also, I'd like to just mention as well, some upcoming events. Police Services Board is being held on Ju-, July 26th. I'd like to inform members of council and residents that the, according to the motion of council on June 25th, that I'll be making a presentation with the Police Services Board this week at, on June 26th, July 26th, I should say, at 8:30 regarding the importance of keeping a police station in Niagara Falls open and operating for residents. Also, just a follow-up too, we have a, the June Foxwell fundraiser on August 18th. The Canadian Cancer Society's throw grandma from the plane fundraiser is coming up. It is a, to be held on August 18th in June Foxwell. A friend, a very, of course, a friend and a very involved and dedicated member of our community has volunteered to skydive on her seventieth birthday to raise funds for cancer, cancer research. And the event will be held at Glendale Airport at 2:00 PM. And I'd like you to show your support for June and for the Canadian Cancer Society. I'm circulating a pledge form this evening. I'm going to ask members of council to consider offering support for her as well. And I'd just do that, if I may, through our CIO. Thank you. Thank you very much for your consideration. Counsel Thompson.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, but I just saw Jay Cockton sitting in the audience and I just went over and asked him what he was doing here today. And he said he just came down to make a comment to city council about the proposal that they gave a few weeks ago. And I wondered if there's an opportunity for him to take one minute to do that. And I, I hope everybody has seen the amount of publicity that has been generated, TV and media coverage right across Canada and the United States as a result of him being in our community. So I would love to be given a minute to speak.
Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Fisher to allow Mr. Cockton to address council. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all of whom favor? Motion is carried. Welcome, Mr. Cockton. Please come forward, if you would, to the podium.
I know you have a lot of busy things on your schedule, so I just don't take but a moment. I just wanted to come here this evening seeing it was raining and I wasn't able to walk in the rain. I thought I, but takes the opportunity. I don't get much chance to do it. To thank you all very much for your support and for your understanding to the, my proposal of what I want to do here eventually, hopefully. As you all know, the Parks Commission has entertained the idea of looking at a business report. We are in the process of putting this together. I'm not quite sure what a business report means. I'm a wire walker, but I'm sure I will learn in the very near future. It is underway, and I just wanted to come once again and thank everybody here for their support and their understanding. I also want to thank the people of Niagara Falls. They have always been my champions, and I can assure you, when it happens, and I'm always believed that the glass is half full, never half empty, when it happens, we will not let you down. We will bring the world to Niagara Falls. We have some ideas. There are four men, as I've mentioned before, that are capable of bringing the attention of the entire world here. There are only four men in the western hemisphere that can do this. But before this can happen, before I can go to this one particular man, I must have everything else in place. And when he takes it, he'll give us a piece of chocolate cake that we've never dreamed of. Thank you very much and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Cockton. Okay, what's the difference with that? Okay, the next item on the agenda, communications and comments of the city clerk. We have a request from Scouts Canada to raise the Hundred Years of Scouting flag above the city of Niagara Falls on August 1st, 2007. For pleasure, counsel. Counsel Carrio?
(inaudible).
Are you making that motion?
(inaudible).
Okay. Seconded by Counsel Maes. Any comments?
(inaudible).
Having seen none, all of whom favor? All of whom favor, please? Raise your hands. Thank you, Counsel Carrio. Thank you. Additional items through the counsel's consideration? Mr. Clerk?
No additional items.
Okay. I'd like to have ratification of Corporate Services Committee actions, please. Brought forward. Chair is Counsel Peter Angelo.
Thank you, Your Worship. Following items that will be ratified from tonight's meeting, Corporate Services. First, that the minutes of the May 28th meeting be adopted as recorded. Second, that the 2006 investments report be received for information. Third item, that the supply of water for a tenant at a account be shut off when the tenant fails to provide or continues to provide the required deposit in full. And in situations wherein a change of tenants has occurred, the property owner is required to have written direction to staff regarding the establishment of the new account. Fourth item, Your Worship, that staff will report back to council on the report provided and presented by Mr. Ed Belowski. And also, that staff will contact Mr. Michael Loudon as a follow-up to his 2000 report. And lastly, that staff will provide counsel with a copy of the Loudon report. Once these initiatives are completed, staff will undertake a water and sewer rates review in time for consideration of the 2008 utility budget. Last item, Your Worship, at the request from Amanda Ocassion for donation to the Global Youth Network Initiative, be received and filed in a document with the minutes.
Can you move by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Di Addati? Any discussion on that? All of whom favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Ratification of Community Services Committee action. I'm going to call on the chair, Counsel Di Addati.
Thank you. The following items that will be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of July 9th, 2007 be approved as amended. That the Kailua Pumping Station Service Area Municipal Class EA. Under that, that the city adopt the recommendations set out in the environmental study report for the Kailua Pumping Station Sanitary Service Area Municipal Class EA. That staff be directed to advertise the notice of study completion as set out in Municipal Class EA process. That the temporary pump fencing and related overflow piping be permanently removed from the site and the subject lands be restored to its original condition. And that the staff report on the cost estimates for the implementation of the recommendations contained in the report as soon as possible. The MW 2007-78 Maintenance Street Parking Restriction. That the existing parking restriction on the south side of Mainland be extended from Leonard Avenue to a point eighty-six meters west of Leonard Avenue. MW 2007-82, the Cherry Hill Drive at Cherry Grove Intersection Control Review. That the parking control measures as described in the report MW 2007-82 be approved. MW-2007-94, Charivan NCDSP Pilot Project. That the city of Niagara Falls entering to a ten-month agreement to supply charivan service to the Niagara Catholic School Board as a pilot project for special needs student transportation. That a driver and bus monitor be hired on a contract for a ten-month period. That scheduling software be purchased to assist scheduling charivan services. And that the mayor and the clerk be authorized to execute the necessary agreement. MW 2007-92, Quick View Professional 24 Zoom Camera. That this report be received and filed for information. R2007-17, the Centennial Water Molecule. That the Centennial Water Molecule currently located at the High Tech Material Handling Company, Saint Niagara Lake, be returned to the city of Niagara Falls and that the agreement be enforced. That the Centennial Water Molecule be installed on a permanent basis to the new Four Pad Community Arena. That the city take appropriate legal action if the molecule was not returned. That was not it.
That's not it.
That's not correct.
Mr. Clerk?
So that will have to be amended.
Yes, can we, do you have that correction?
The motion on that particular item was that the water molecule will remain where it is until the construction is completed of the Four Pad Arena. And when that's prepared, the molecule will then be moved to that location.
So that's my motion. That parking, the city committee, that the revised terms of reference for the parking of city committee... Okay, these are all screwed up. That the revised terms of reference for the parking city committee be accepted. That a review and the implementation of a permit and appropriately for the widening of residential driveways be undertaken to provide greater protection of city trees. That the amendment of schedule be from the city of Niagara Falls tree planting list of acceptable species in bylaw 2004-73. Application for permit to injure, destroy, or plant trees on public property and remove the following species from the list. Morley maples and its cultivars, Schwedler and crimson king, as the species is invasive. Am I wrong there?
No, that's correct.
Three times?
(inaudible).
Right, when you stop that, thank you. Ashes as a precautionary measure, given the expectation that the era rash will eventually reach the Niagara region, that the parking city committee be established by September 2007. Under new business, that staff comments on the cost and effectiveness of speed bumps versus stop signs as traffic calming measures in the city of Niagara Falls. And that council provide a letter of support to the Niagara Peninsula Hungarian Culture Sports Complex to reinstate their charitable status. I so move.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Di Addati. Any discussion? Counsel Wayne.
Just a little correction on item four under Park in the City. It wasn't that the parking city committee be established, it's that the technical committee comprised of staff be established by September.
Okay, qualify that. Okay, thank you. Any comments? Counsel Thompson.
Just one regarding the Canadian Cultural, Hungarian Cultural Center and the Niagara Strings. There's two organizations that are together who are looking to get their status for charitable purposes back on track.
Okay, so noted. Okay, anything else? Recalled, all of whom favor? Any opposed? No, the motion is carried. Thank you. Ratification and camera actions. Mr. Clerk?
(inaudible).
From the guard, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following two items were ratified in camera tonight. The first is that council acknowledge the hard work and efforts of Mr. Doug Darbison, who has announced his retirement, who has, has plans to retire from the corporation, and approve the succession plan and appointment of Mr. Alex Kovovich to the position of director of planning effective October 9th, 2007. The second action was that council approve the market medium position and the implementation plan of the Mercer Compensation Study, which was outlined in staff report July 23rd, 2007.
Thank you very much. Moved by Counsel Inoney, seconded by Counsel Carrio. Any discussion? Having seen none, all of whom favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items, anybody which has have lifted? Counsel Carrio?
I'll second your motion. I would just like, R2007-19 taken off and dealt with separately with the arena complex?
Okay, 2007-19.
That separately.
Okay, we have a motion to take the rest in bulk. Moved by Counsel Fisher, seconded by yourself. Counsel Wayne.
Yes, I see we have a request from SciTech that we defer matters regarding to the Grand Niagara Development Proposal. I believe one of them is in the consent agenda, PD 2007-60.
Yes.
So I guess I'll move the fall of PD 2007-60 and there's a resolution.
I think you want to, you have a chance to discuss that.
Okay, okay, well, let's lift, okay, let's lift that then from the agenda as well.
That's what I do. The motion to lift 2007-60, is there a second to that motion? Move a second here? Okay, Counsel Peter Angelo.
If I could just make a comment, I mean, generally, if the applicant wants to defer something, then it's the applicant's request.
Correct.
In this situation here, it's not the applicant that's requesting. If we allow this one, then anyone can ask for the fall of an application and we'd have to apply. I'm not going to vote to defer this, Your Worship.
I think Counsel Peter Angelo is correct on that. So Counsel Wayne, would you like to withdraw that?
No, what I was concerned about is, it's one of the few heavy industries we have left in the city, concerned about, you know, proper, proper distancing, separation distances from what's basically short-term residential development in their operation. I don't know, I just try to support our industry whenever I can, so that's why I was bringing it forward.
Mr. Darbison?
Just to clarify, and Mr. Darbison, you want to comment further, staff is aware of the concerns expressed by SciTech, and there's been ongoing dialogue at the back for the past year. Well, it's been told back and forth, staff are of the opinion that the report as presented is quite acceptable and, and that really do not support the concerns of SciTech at this point. But the reality is, if you approve this report tonight, there is a twenty-day field period, and staff have discussed this with the component, that there is an opportunity for further dialogue with SciTech over that twenty-day period. So staff are recommending that we approve it.
I think that's the proper way of handling it. I think I agree. There's no question about that. So they do have, there's an appeal process after this. So would you withdraw then the, okay, thank you. Any other comments? We have lifted one at this point, so we'll deal with the rest first, okay? All of whom favor? We're dealing with all of them except 2007-19. Okay, all of whom favor? Please raise your hand. Okay, the motion is carried. Now, Counsel Carrio, 2007-19, arena complex development project.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a question on, on that, on page, the second page under the arena contract. In the event the approved construction cost for the Four Pad Arena exceeds $30 million, the total on-sum fee will be increased by 5.5% of the increased construction cost over $30 million. My question is, could we not get that waived, Mr. Mayor? We're already signing a contract with this company for a billion and seven. We're hoping that they're going to do their best to keep this project in line. It seems like it would be counterproductive to give them more money if they can't keep the project in line. So I, I would not vote for them to be paid more money if the project exceeds $30 million. I think $1.7 million is already a tremendous amount of money to pay the consultant to do this project. And if they won't do it for that money, I suggest we go back and retender it. Mr. Darbison?
That's the direction, counsel. If they want to go with the agreement with the amendment, we'll bring that back and they put in the support.
So that's your motion, Counsel Carrio?
Do it for the proposed price.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Inoney. Okay, any discussion to that? Having seen none, all of whom favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to resolutions. What was that, Mr. Clerk? Resolution that the council appropriation of city Niagara Falls hereby determined in Resolution that the council appropriation of City Niagara Falls hereby determines in accordance with Section 34, subsection 17 of the Planning Act, uh, RSO 1990, the change to propose official plan in the zoning bylaw for application, numbers AM-38 2004 and AM-19 2006 being the Grand Niagara Resort regarding the expansion to, of the, to the golf course and the resort block area, and the development of a lifestyle residential committee is minor in nature and does not require any further notice. Councillor Thompson moves, seconded by Councillor Fisher. Any discussion on the matter? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Clerk, any additional bylaws, or amendments, bylaws this evening?
I guess the bylaws, uh, have been remembered, uh, as mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Bylaw 2007-147 now is to apply to Acting Clerk. The bylaws lifted on the agenda will then be remembered starting at 2007-148 and continuing on until we reach, what is listed there is 2007-162. We then have additional bylaws, 2007-163, a bylaw to provide for the adoption of an amendment to the City of Niagara Falls official plan, and 192006 and AM-38 2004, as included in the handouts. And actual bylaw 2007-164, the amendment for Acting Mayor. So, in total, all the bylaws do start at 2007-147 through to 2007-165.
Thank you. Have a motion to use the bylaws, bylaws to be given in first reading. Moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor Diadati. You've heard the motion, any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
Bylaw 2007-147 through to 2007-165, by the first time.
Your motion to give the bylaws to second and third reading. Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor Fisher. Again, you've heard the motion, any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried.
Bylaw 2007-147, 2007-165, by the second and third time.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Any new business, Councillor Aydenley? Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as we all know, we had a terrible storm on Thursday, talked about large amount of water in a very short amount of time. And if anybody read the newspaper Friday morning, they saw that there was a woman on Beaver Dam's Road whose basement actually collapsed due to the weight of the water on her front lawn. Um, I had the opportunity to go there, it was Friday, late Friday in the day, I know, Mr. Mayor, coincidentally, you were driving past me as I was leaving and gave me the address and asked you to stop also. And at 7958 Beaver Dam's Road, all I can explain, because I think, um, Councillor Peter Angelo, uh, gave the pictures to go around, um, the best I can describe it is she had a small lake on her front lawn. Um, as I walked, uh, with Mr. Brown and, uh, up and down the street from Magnolia down to the Pointe des House, it doesn't take a brain surgeon to see, um, how much the road slopes down, so that the water coming down clears its way right to her front yard. And, Mr. Mayor, I know you, you got there as it was drained, and I've taken the pictures with me, so I hope you had a chance to take a look at them. What I would ask is, they are here, and with council's indulgences, that we ask one of the gentlemen who's, we're about to speak on behalf of the residents there before I make my motion, the opportunity to speak, so I so move that.
Moved by Councillor Aydenley, seconded by Councillor Fisher, that the resident allowed to speak. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Please come forward.
Worship? Yes, Councillor May? I believe I have a conflict on this issue, I will have some insurance in that area and some property.
Okay, still noted, thank you. Yes, welcome, sir. To the better for the record, you state your name and address, please.
Glenn Lee's Bosch, 7974 Beaver Dam's Road. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening. I'd also like to thank Mr. Persai for participating, I'm speaking on her behalf tonight. Appreciate her strength, so late to get here, stay here. Basically, what, what we're looking at is what's been described to us as an ongoing problem, and for me, it's a problem of one and a half years, seeing as that's as, as long as I've been there. I've encountered water in my basement, not too soon, but Mr. Persai has. We've taken appropriate steps to take care of the water, and there is still saturation of concrete in my basement, and I'm basically at financial ends, I cannot go any further to prevent any further damage to my house financially. So, we come here for help from you. We need you guys to, to come to bat for us and, and do a full investigation as to why this is happening, how the water is allowed to collect like it is, um, hopefully to an end that we can resolve the problem, and, um, you know, the rest of us don't suffer the same fate as Mr. Persai's basement has suffered. She's now, uh, evicted, or not evicted, but her house is condemned, she no longer has residence, and, um, none of us want that for our families.
Thank you, would you like to speak, ma'am, as well? Okay, I remember the council, do you have questions, uh, for the speaker? We have an issue, a serious issue where the house has been condemned, and, uh, it's been condemned by the city, city building department, and we have, uh, Mr. Persai has left, but, uh, Councillor Aydenley, do you want to make your comment?
No, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, because I think this takes action, I mean, it was heartbreaking to be in Mrs. Persai's kitchen while they handed her a condemned order for her house. And they're not going home to sleep at her house, it's tonight, she can't even do that. The house was in a terrible state. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we request a full report and chronology of the responses to requests for services since the city was given this role by the region in 2000.
Okay, let's second to that motion. Councillor Peter Angelo, any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. We'll be on to it, and we'll have a full report as soon as we can. Thank you very much. Thank you. Another new business? Councillor Thompson?
Um, I'd like to, uh, I have three quick items. First one, uh, goes back to, um, Woodbine Avenue and the, uh, traffic calming, uh, efforts that have been put, that were there the last time I brought it up. I was told that it went through, uh, an EA and, uh, public meetings, and, uh, all the people out there had the opportunity to participate, and it was because of the speeding and, uh, other issues that were brought forward as complaints. Um, when I brought it up at the last meeting, and I heard that, uh, I got numerous calls the next day, of the residents on Woodbine Street, that they said they'd heard nothing about, uh, an EA, nothing about, uh, meetings, and did not have the opportunity to comment. Uh, there appears to be a lot of people that are very concerned and upset about the situation, but they asked me to bring up tonight the fact that at the corner of, um, Montrose and Woodbine, there is another, uh, effort that, uh, traffic calming, where there was a boulevard right in the center of the roadway there. It was there for a short period of time, and with trucks and other vehicles trying to turn there, the, uh, the newly, uh, installed boulevard was broken up and smashed, and, instead of investigating the situation, uh, what they've done, they've gone out there again, and the residents were calling me horrified that the island was being put in again after it had been just, uh, broken up, due to the fact that it was cutting off the, uh, access and the egress from the, uh, Woodbine Street, uh, as a result of that. Uh, I don't expect anybody to give me any, uh, magic comments about what went on there, but, uh, what I would like to do is make a motion that, uh, some of the residents in the immediate area in the first block, uh, be canvassed about their comments, uh, with respect to this particular, uh, island right at the front, and, uh, generally about, uh, we have a motion, we're going to, uh, look at, uh, stop signs or, uh, speed bumps, uh, it's really an island right there, right up and down Woodbine Avenue, and, uh, I don't think, uh, in spite of the fact that there was an EA, that there were meetings, uh, and that's prior to my time being back here, uh, there's a lot of people that are very concerned. So, I'd like to, uh, report back, basically, uh, regarding the island in the front, to, to see if that is justified, and if it's being broken up again, uh, as a result of trucks and traffic going through there.
The motion, question report, you're seconded. Councillor Carroll, any, any discussion? Councillor Wing?
Could we also look into, um, the, the street limits along there, because at the same time, uh, I'm still getting emails about excessive speeding despite the, uh, traffic calming measures have...
Like to add that to the motion?
I think from further along the street, but there's still concerns about the very thing which gave rise to all this stuff that other people are apparently complaining about. So, if that could be added, I'd be happy to support it.
Add that to the motion, I remember the council, okay? Well, on that then, please, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Next item?
Uh, the next, uh, one is rather pleasant duty, and, uh, I have to thank, um, a community volunteer, Gary Taylor, and, uh, Mr. Dan O'Connor's son. Um, I'm sure that, uh, most people who've been in the city and involved in, uh, minor sports, specifically soccer, for many years, is aware of, uh, Dan O'Connor, and in fact, he's, uh, in the agenda tonight, strangely enough, being, uh, uh, suggested for the Wall of Fame coming up, uh, this year, for his, uh, work with, uh, minor sports, and, particularly, uh, with soccer, not only boys, but also, uh, in, uh, started in 1955, but in 1959, started the first minor soccer here in the City of Niagara Falls, and then a short time after that was also instrumental in starting the, uh, Niagara Falls Girls' Minor Soccer, and, uh, spent most of his life, uh, working in, uh, in volunteering for, uh, soccer in the City of Niagara Falls. I have a, uh, a huge, uh, file here, uh, with all of his activities, uh, with, uh, a lot of the, uh, a lot of the, uh, great things that he accomplished and did in his life, uh, the reason why he's being considered for the Wall of Fame, but the, uh, Mr. Gary Taylor, a friend of the family, and the family, uh, have asked that this be brought up so that he be considered for, uh, a designation for a park sometime in the future. Uh, I know that there's a, uh, staff committee that periodically reviews this, and, uh, I believe, uh, that, uh, Dan O'Connor, uh, who has passed on now in 1981, uh, has a record that, uh, very few people could, um, emulate in the City of Niagara Falls with respect to his community involvement and, uh, with, uh, soccer. So, I would move that we refer that to staff for their consideration at the appropriate time.
You're seconded, Councillor's motion?
I know that there is a, uh, a stone in the boys' home for soccer with a plaque designating, uh, his efforts and, uh, his name there, but, uh, I think, uh, the family feels that, uh, this is an appropriate action, and we'd like to see this happen, so I would so move.
Seconded by Councillor Fisher. Any discussion on the matter? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
Last, uh, comment is a, uh, question about, uh, two, uh, construction areas, uh, one, uh, on, uh, Victoria Avenue and Archfield area that, uh, was closed off for many, many months, uh, one of the businesses in there has, uh, has gone under as a result of the constant construction, the road being blocked off. Uh, the other one is, uh, Montrose Road from, uh, Creek Road to Bigelow Road, which is, uh, ongoing at the present time. The businesses in that area, uh, are doing, well, in fact, one, on, uh, Victoria Avenue did no business, and, uh, they were completely blocked off, and, uh, they're, uh, wanting to know where they can, uh, submit, uh, some kind of, uh, consideration to, uh, the insurance through the city, and, uh, if in fact, there is any, uh, thing that can be done to, uh, assist these people who are experiencing hardships as a result of the construction, maybe through you to Mr. Holman or probably Mr.?
Mr. Beaman? Would you like to deal with that?
Well, um, they can submit a claim. In general, those claims are not insured claims. So, any compensation that they receive would have to come out of the tax base. I mean, the insurance companies don't insure us for what we regularly do, they insure us for mistakes we make.
Well, I understand, but there, there is, uh, also, uh, injurious affection that, uh, there's a clause that we've, uh, heard around here many times over the years, where somebody, uh, who was adverse to infected over a lengthy period of time, uh, and has the opportunity to submit, allow, suggest to him that they do that, submit a claim and see, uh, see, uh, what results, uh, unless they can submit a claim.
I mean, they, they certainly can submit a claim. Okay? And I think that's the answer, of course, as we've done it, it's, uh, yeah, they can do that. Okay. Thank you. Um, now, I have Councillor Peter Angelo and Councillor Diadati.
Thanks, Worship. Um, first item is in regards to garage sale signs, and, uh, I'm just wondering, actually, through you, to Mr. Maston, um, I guess what the city's policy is on, on actually putting up signs that are off of people's property. Um, I don't believe anyway that the city actually allows signs to go on municipal property, same as, much the same as, uh, when we have elections. But I guess the issue I have with putting up signs is that, hopefully, the people would take them down. And as I drive around right now, I see some signs that have been up there for quite a while, and then it becomes a tedious maintenance issue for, uh, for city staff to try to get around and, and take the signs down. So, I'm wondering, actually, Worship, what our policy is, and, uh, and whether or not it can be stressed to people, when they actually feel, you know, that...
Sure, for our input, from handle, I can...
Uh, well, I just know that, uh, under the city sign bylaw, we have run into other concerns with different signs, whether it be real estate signs, election signs, uh, whatnot, and, uh, as far as I know, that, uh, city staff has been removing those signs when they feel that they are on city property. Um, I'm not sure if, uh, Director, uh, if it works, uh, here, uh, could comment any further on that, as how that may be addressed in the city new sign bylaw, uh, but certainly that could be an area of, uh, discussion.
So, Holman, can you address that at all, or are you around first? Okay, Mr. McDonald?
Just a comment on that, we, we do not give any approval for such signs, and, uh, we, uh, they get, we have to take them down, as we often do on blitz on those sort of things, and we encourage the public not to use, uh, public property, and it's a real nuisance and it's a real problem in the areas. Uh, but, we, on the other hand, we haven't done any real educational, uh, effort in that regard either, and we'd be appropriate to do something on that one, so.
I think generally, for my seat, Councillor Peter Angelo, we've allowed them to happen. Unfortunately, some people are nailing signs to trees, which is a no-no, and, uh, usually they get them down at a responsible time, after the sale, usually that afternoon. So, if you'd like to bring something forward, I'd be glad to have you in a team. Worship, perhaps only if the staff would, uh, basically educate those people that actually come down for a garage sale permit, um, in, in respect to what the city's bylaw is with regards to the garage sale signs. I don't actually object to them putting up a sign, um, it's when they leave it up after, uh, the event actually happens, and then it's city staff or someone else that has to go up there and take the sign down. That's my only issue with it, Worship. But we'd hope that the residents would cooperate and have them down, don't be there after the sale, so that... Right now, there's a lot that I... Uh, second item, Worship, is in regards to neighborhood meetings, often the planning department has, uh, different meetings, um, with the neighborhoods, if they know that there's, uh, a planning application or a resoning application coming forward, uh, they invite the applicant, and they invite, uh, all of the affected residents that are within a certain distance of, uh, of said property. Worship, the council, uh, does not get invited to these neighborhood meetings. I'd like to make a motion, actually, that we be notified that these meetings are taking place, this way, if we can fit it into our schedule, Worship, we can come out, and we'll just be that much more knowledgeable.
Great. Moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor Aydenley, that we be notified of the neighborhood news. Any comments further? Having seen none? All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. And, uh, Councillor Diadati?
Thank you, Worship. Uh, quickly, um, whenever we deal with planning applications or reports, we're often only given the Ontario Corporation numbered companies and not the principals, and I find that, uh,